Kudiyoki. All right. We have two public hearing items today. One on ordinance eight, five, nine, zero, and one a public hearing site review. For our life science facilities over on Walnut Street, we'll read all that stuff officially when we get there. But right now, we will have book participation. This is your opportunity as a member of the public to speak for three minutes each on a topic, a subject that is not part of our public hearing items today. So if anybody wants to speak, now is the time to raise your electronic hand. And while you're doing that, Vivian will walk us through the regulations. Rather than us regulations, the code of conduct.
Yeah, could have done that. That's a good term. Thank you, first of all, everyone from the public for joining us today, and we really appreciate you taking your time to to be with us tonight at the planning board meeting. My name is Vivian Castor-Wildridge, and my role here with you tonight is to facilitate the public engagement part of these meetings. And these rules that I'll share are in place to help us achieve a balance between transparency with community members and security that minimizes disruptions. Planning Board will start with open comments as Sarah mentioned, and then there are two public hearing items later in the agenda. So we want our participants to know that the city is really striving into a vision co-created by city staff and community for productive, meaningful, and inclusive civic conversations, and that we have worked with the community to develop these expectations. And the vision is really designed to promote free conversation and dialogue while also recognizing we want to make sure everyone who participates feels safe and welcome. And we want to ensure that we make space for different viewpoints in our meetings because we believe it leads to more informed decision making. Next slide. We have a lot of information on our website about the productive atmospheres vision, but I'll be specific about what we need to know for tonight. There are a number of rules of decorum in the Boulder Revised Code, and we have some general guidelines that are advisory in nature to share with all of our participants this evening. We ask that all remarks and testimony raised tonight be related to the city business. We will not allow any participant to make threats or use any other forms of intimidation against any person in this session.
I'm sorry, Vivian, if I interrupt both Lisa and ML are in the attendees and would like to be let in.
Okay. Thanks for letting me know. And I can do it quickly. ML should be able to move over. Um. So I was saying I'll send these racial up if that's other speech and behavior that disrupts the meeting or otherwise makes it impossible for us to continue in the moment is prohibited. And we do also ask that participants identify themselves by first and last name so that we may call on you by your first and last name, and we know who's providing input. Next slide. We are in the Zoom webinar format, and this allows participants from the public to speak at the designated times, and we will not be turning on video for community members because of security concerns in this platform. If your full name is not currently displayed, you can change it by right clicking on your name, or if you're unable to figure that out, you can go ahead and use the Q and A function, and I'm happy to change it for you. You can just send me your name. No pre-existing list for signing up, so if you would like to speak at the appropriate time, raise your virtual hand, and you can do this by going to the horizontal menu with three clickable items and clicking on the hand icon, and it will raise a hand next to your name. We will know to call on you. If you have an expanded menu, you can also get to the raise hand icon by clicking on reactions. And I will be watching to see if anybody is participating by phone to provide you with instructions as well. Okay. That wraps up these codes of conduct, and I will check to see who would like to speak at this in the meeting. Um. So Garrett, I'm going to call on you, and I ask that you introduce yourself by your first and your last name. And you have three minutes. Please go ahead.
I guess I should make sure. This is about one of the agenda items. Should I be waiting and speaking at the agenda item? I got on the on the call late, so I apologize.
Yeah, that would be correct.
Okay, I'll undo my hand and then I'll wait. Sorry.
And thanks for changing it.
No problem. Thank you. So nobody else?
Nobody else.
All right, so now we'll go to approval of minutes. You only get to vote on the minutes if you are actually in the meeting, so we're first going to vote on the planning board draft minutes from May sixteenth. Has everyone had a chance to give their feedback changes to Devon? All right, so we're gonna vote. Laura?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
ML?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Lisa? Yeah, okay. Just so you know, we can't hear you yet, Lisa. Okay, so that passes six, zero. I was not at the meeting, so I don't get to vote. Next is the planning board draft minutes from June sixth, twenty twenty-three. Did everyone get a chance to send? Yes, they did. Okay. So there are five of us who are at that meeting. Laura?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
ML?
Yes.
And Sarah is a yes, so that passes five, zero, or is approved five, zero. Next is discussion of dispositions, planning board call-ups and continuations. We have a call-up, a use review to convert six thousand, six hundred and thirty square feet of ground retail space to meeting space in the existing Marriott Hotel in the BR one zone. Does anyone want to call this up? Okay. Excellent. We are speeding along here. Fabulous. Okay, our first public hearing item, agenda title, Public Hearing and Recommendation to City Council. Whoop. Hold on, my computer just moved on me, which I did not want that to happen. Apologies. Agenda item, Public Hearing and Recommendation to City Council Regarding Proposed Ordinance Eight, Five, Nine, Zero, Amending Title Nine, Land Use Code BRC nineteen eighty-one to update the use table and use standards related to walkable neighborhood centers and setting forth related details. We have Lisa Hoodie. Howdy? Howd?
Hood.
Hood, thank you. Here, and she'll give us a thirty-minute presentation, and then we'll have time for Q and A with her and then deliberation. Lisa, if people want to ask you a question while you're making a presentation, are you okay with folks raising their hand?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, great. All right, take it away, Lisa.
All right, I get my screen shared. Good evening, planning board members. It's nice to see you all again. I am excited to bring forth the final ordinance for the use table and standards project. This is number four or five of ordinances, the third module of the second phase. And so we'll be looking at ordinance eighty-five, ninety, related to neighborhood centers tonight. The purpose of your review is to make a recommendation to the city council on the ordinance. An overview of the presentation that I'll be giving tonight, since we've talked a lot about the use table, but it's been a while. I'll give a quick background refresher on the kind of the goals of the project, things like that. And then we'll dive into module three, which is this ordinance before you tonight. I'll talk about the focus scope, give an overview of past input related to this topic, and then give a summary of the engagement that we've heard this summer. Then I will go into a summary of the ordinance that is in your packet. So starting off with some background. As you all know, the initial goals for the use table and standards project really to simplify and streamline the regulations. It's a really complex part of the code that's gotten better and better as we've worked more on it, but trying to make it more understandable and legible, and also more predictable and certain for people to understand. A big part of module three and this ordinance tonight is aligning the use table and the permitted uses with the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan Goals and Policies, specifically those related to neighborhood centers. We've also been trying to identify where there might be gaps between the kinds of uses, either housing or business that people want to see in the city, and what's actually allowed through the use table. So really trying to bring together the community desires with the use table. Just a reminder that this project is really narrowly focused on changes to the use table and standards part of the land use code. So doesn't include a reassessment of the comprehensive plan policies. It's really intended to implement those comprehensive plan policies that are the result of many years of conversations and community engagement that got us to an adopted comprehensive plan that we are trying to implement through these code changes. It also doesn't include changes to anything that involves form, bulk, or intensity standards, so things like setbacks, FAR, floor area ratio, density, occupancy, things like that. Also not involving anything with development standards like parking, landscaping, or signs. So really focused on the use table and standards. As I already alluded to, this project has been going on for quite a while. It was actually initiated by the planning board in twenty eighteen and identified as a priority project. We completed phase one of the project in twenty nineteen. It had to be paused briefly during the COVID nineteen pandemic, and we've been working on phase two in twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. Phase two, as you know, was split into what we called three different modules. So the first one was adopted in June of last year. That was our functional fixes, module one. That was really the technical update, the reorganization and consolidation, trying to make everything a little bit easier to read, the table easier to navigate. Module two was focused on the industrial areas, so that was really implementing the comprehensive plan policies related to the industrial districts and industrial uses, and trying to get a more diverse mix of uses in our industrial areas of the city. Similarly, module three is also looking to to support diversity and mix of uses, but is focused more on the neighborhood areas, neighborhood centers of the city. So like I said, this is the final module of the use table and standards project. So you might remember the last time we talked about it, the scope hadn't been really nailed down for what we would do with module three. There was some talk about whether we would be looking at residential, introducing new non-residential uses into residential zoning districts. And based on conversations we had with planning board, city council, our working group, and really just thinking through the kind of upcoming planning work that's going to be done, we decided to focus module three really on the neighborhood centers, which are identified areas in the comprehensive plan. And this is for a number of reasons. We are going to have an upcoming comprehensive plan update where we'll really be able to focus on or have a really broad conversation about the future of residential zoning in Boulder. And I think with the this narrow scope of this project really only being about use table, it would really benefit to have a broader conversation about things like form and development standards and things like that in the context of talking about introducing non-residential uses into residential zoning. So based on the input and the analysis and kind of thinking that the the comprehensive plan update will be coming soon, we decided to focus these changes on those neighborhood centers. And in that way, by making sure that these neighborhood centers are fulfilling the needs of the neighborhoods around them, really focusing on walkable neighborhoods. So module three focuses on, like we said, with the goals of the initial project, removing the barriers in the code for uses that people want to have nearby in the neighborhood centers. And that way, we're supporting the fifteen-minute neighborhood concept, which it really means that people have access to the services that they need on a daily basis by walking, biking, or transit. And going back to that same goal of aligning the comprehensive plan with the use table. And as I mentioned, building on the previous input received, we've gotten a lot of great public input, board input, city council input over the years on this project, so that that really helped us to identify the focus areas. So as you saw in the memo, the changes in the ordinance really kind of break down into three main topics. The first is restaurants. Second is duplexes and townhomes. And then the third is kind of a miscellaneous catch-all for some other identified changes that can help support walkable neighborhoods. Just a reminder on the neighborhood center concept in the comprehensive plan. This is a map from the comprehensive plan. It identifies twelve different areas of the city that are neighborhood centers. You can see they're spread out geographically. There's all different types from a kind of audio-oriented shopping center to historic neighborhood areas, neighborhood commercial areas. So all types and flavors of neighborhood centers that we're focusing on with these comprehensive plan policies. And the interesting part of this project is translating that comprehensive plan to how do we implement that through zoning? And so what we've, the first step that we took was to take that comprehensive map, comprehensive plan map, and identify which zoning districts are actually present in those neighborhood centers. So when you look at it this way, it allowed us to narrow the folk, the the focus of these changes to basically three classes of zoning districts, our business districts, our downtown districts, and our mixed-use districts. So that became the focus of the module, module three changes. There are two main policies in the comprehensive plan that we've really been focusing on implementing with these changes. The first is this one related to neighborhood centers. You might remember that when we looked at module two, there was very similar looking page for industrial areas. So that we have these specific guiding principles and policies for neighborhood centers, and it it really boils down to the city encouraging neighborhood centers to provide pedestrian-friendly and welcoming environments with a mix of land uses. And specifically, the guiding principles are meeting the everyday needs of neighboring communities, so that's having a mix of locally-serving retail, other activities, personal services, grocery stores, retail, things like that. And then also ensuring that there's an appropriate scale transition in regards to housing. So in that number two guiding principle, it talks about how the center of the neighborhood center should be kind of the most intense, and then in terms of residential, and then that would scale down as you get closer to the lower-density residential areas. So that scale and meeting the everyday needs of neighboring communities were really informative for the work that and the recommendations in the ordinance tonight. The other main policy that we've been looking at is two point two four, this commitment to a walkable and accessible city, and that's where the fifteen-minute neighborhoods concept comes in. So this policy says that the city should be designing neighborhoods and mixed-use business areas that provide easy and safe access by foot, bike, and transit to places like neighborhood centers and other shared spaces and amenities. So it's really those two policies. There's a number of policies that are applicable to the ordinance changes tonight, but those are kind of the two main ones that we've been focusing on for the walkable neighborhoods idea. All right, now I will go through a quick overview of the public input that we've heard previously on the project. You all have seen, I've presented this before, so I won't go into much detail, but just a reminder that the topics and that relate to module three have really been integrated into all of the public engagement for the use table project. So we've really heard from people throughout the entire project. So we had in-person engagement back in twenty nineteen. We had virtual engagement during the pandemic in twenty twenty. All of the the virtual engagement in twenty twenty actually specifically was about neighborhood centers. So we've got a lot of great information and input that's helped to guide the project. In that earlier input, what we heard from people was that they'd like to see more mixed-use housing, neighborhood-scale stores, restaurant shops and retail, transit, green space, coffee, things like that. And then less traffic, banks, car dealerships, kind of vehicle-related things, fast food and drive-throughs. And then I mentioned that we had a questionnaire specifically about neighborhood centers. So we asked if people were open to a greater mix of uses in the neighborhood centers. Heard significant support from respondents there, that there was broad support for restaurants and coffee shops, retail uses, and personal services in the neighborhood centers. In regards to residential, people were open to a mix of housing types being located there. And then most important was the walkable or bike access and the design of the buildings. That's just a brief overview of the past input. In your memo, there was links to more detailed input, if you'd like to look at that. Now I'll go into the engagement we've been doing this summer. So once we completed module two, we kicked off module three in the spring, and then we've been focused on community engagement throughout this summer. So this time, because the last round of input or the the rounds of input over the previous years were pretty general about what would you like to see, what would you not like to see, things like that. This time around, we wanted to present specific changes for people to react to. So we took what we heard from the planning board subcommittee, the first round of the planning board subcommittee, who went line by line, row by row, column by column, and created a long list of recommendations and focus areas for the project. We went through those changes, staffed it our own analysis, and then we took all of that previous input to create this initial set of, here are some proposed, some possible opportunities to improve the walkability of neighborhoods around neighborhood centers. And I'll go into each one of these on further slides, but just wanted to kind of highlight the changes that were shown to the public this summer. So what we did for our community engagement strategy, we developed a virtual story map. It's kind of a newer engagement tool that the city hasn't used very often yet. But I think I sent, you all should have received a link to it when we opened the story map, so hopefully you were able to check it out. It was also linked to a questionnaire, and we promoted that through various channels. In addition to virtual engagement, we supplemented that with in-person promotion. So we had several pop-ups. So we were standing at several of these neighborhood centers with our big board and just intercepting people and talking to them about what kind of businesses they wish they would see there, or what might be missing for their daily needs, where they might have to, where something might be missing that they have to drive across town to get to. So we were at Basemar, Idle Market, Meadows, and Gun Barrel. We also attended a couple of fairs and events through July. So we were at one of the Boulder Social Streets event, and a block party at Ponderosa. So that was great to do some in-person engagement. It's been a while with COVID to not be able to do that, so that was really nice to be out there. And then we also sent mailing. So we sent letters to all of the neighborhood center business and property owners so that they were aware of the project and the ability to provide input through the questionnaire. Just a little more detail about the story map in case you didn't explore it. So we had the story map and questionnaire open from July tenth to thirty-first. We got two hundred and forty-six responses to the questionnaire. The story map gave, it was kind of a guided map that gave information on each one of the neighborhood centers as well as downtown. And so it talked about what zoning districts are there, what types of businesses are there, what's the most common type of business that's there. And then it listed the potential changes that would impact each one of those neighborhood centers. After they explored the map, they could either look at just the one near their neighborhood or look at all of them. Then people were asked to fill out a few questions in a questionnaire. It asked about what their current walkable access was to many different services and what type of businesses they'd want to see more of, or that they have concerns about in terms of the potential changes that were shown on the map. So what we heard through both the questionnaire and also our in-person engagement are summarized here, but there's a long engagement summary attached to your your memo packet, if you want to look at verbatim all of the responses to the questionnaire. Generally, the themes that we heard was support for seeing more restaurants. That was absolutely the most common thing we heard through the questionnaire and through the in-person engagement. That was the one that was brought up the most. Grocery stores also came up quite a bit, as well as small retail shops, pharmacies, coffee shops, which would be classified as a restaurant, small music venues, ice cream. I'm not sure if this one was biased just because we were doing this in July, and it was very hot. It was like the hottest days of July that we were asking people, so I'm not sure if we would get that answer in December, but just wanted to throw that out there. We got a lot of that. Bakeries, post offices, and then a lot of support for whatever we can do to support local businesses. That was a very common theme. In terms of concerns, some things that we heard more frequently were kind of all, a lot of them were related to vehicle-related uses, similar to the previous rounds of engagement. So concerns about gas stations, auto repair, drive-throughs. Also, some concerns were raised in the questionnaire about marijuana dispensaries. And kind of on the flip side of the local businesses, people did express concerns about big-box stores and chains and not wanting to see too many of those, but really wanting to see the smaller local businesses thrive in Boulder. And then finally, homelessness services were another use that people raised concerns about. In addition to the broader public input that we've been doing, we also have three groups that have been guiding the direction for this project. So we have a public working group of stakeholders and interested residents that have been working with us throughout the whole use table project, providing direction and feedback. They helped a ton with developing the story map and the questionnaire. And we met with them in March and June. We have our great planning board liaisons, which is Sarah and ML, who have been volunteering extra time to help with this project over the last year or two, providing their guidance and input as well. And then we met with the Community Connectors and Residents, which is a group led by the city that supports underrepresented communities and advances racial equity, and we had a really great conversation with them on talking about the proposed changes and then really what other strategies would help promote walkable neighborhoods. And for those input, I'll kind of go through, or for the input of all those three groups, I'll go through as we go through the topics, as I go through the ordinance to give more, give you more of an idea what those groups said. Um. All right, so getting into the actual ordinance. This is a summary of the changes in ordinance eighty-five, ninety. So like I mentioned, there's going to be three, there's kind of going to be three main topics. So I'll start with restaurants, then we'll talk about duplexes and townhomes, and then I'll get to the kind of miscellaneous other changes to support walkability. Restaurants is one of the most more complex ones, so I wanted to start with that. This has been identified throughout the use table project as a overly complex part of our code, definitely. So if you remember before module one, I think there were eight or nine rows of the use table that were devoted to restaurants. When we reorganized and did all the technical changes in module one, we fixed that organization problem and consolidated it until just one row. But because module one wasn't substantive changes, those requirements are all still there. They're just better organized now into the use tapes, the use standards. But we're still left with twelve different versions of restaurant requirements for Boulder. And the standards differ based on the zoning districts, and they generally relate to three main things. The overall size of the restaurant, the allowed size of the patio, and the hours of operation for the restaurant. Different, so some are a thousand, some are fifteen hundred. Some are three hundred or three fifty for the patio size, and hours of operation is typically at eleven P M. There's a few other districts that have additional unique standards. So the BMS, the Business Main Street District inside the University Hill area, it has standards related to the percentage of income that a restaurant has to have from food, so they have to have fifty percent of their income come from food. They have to have a food preparation area. If it's a brewpub or tavern, they have to provide snacks, and then there's standards related to trash collection. In the industrial districts, which is actually a change that we made during module two, industrial or restaurants in industrial districts have to be located in a mixed-use building, so it can't be a standalone building. It also has the hours of operation at eleven P M. And in our public district, that's really focused on regulations for restaurants and regional parks, so it's a little different than the rest. So the proposed changes for restaurants is to take it from twelve different versions of requirements to essentially it gets grouped into three different groups of changes. So we wanted to focus on kind of the zoning districts that are, if you think of like a commercial and residential interface area, a small commercial area that interfaces closely with a or did I say, yeah, small commercial area that interfaces closely with residential, so kind of the more sensitive areas. So that's our MU two, three, and four, BMS, BT, DT, one, two, and three. And so the proposal in the ordinance before you tonight is to allow restaurants in subject to two standards. A maximum size of four thousand square feet. This represents an increase in the allowable size of restaurants. In most of these districts, there's a one thousand square foot or fifteen hundred square foot limit right now to be allowed by right. Although in the hill, they're actually allowed to be four thousand square feet, but it's always a conditional use, so there's no allowed by right option right now. And then we're proposing to maintain that eleven P M hours of operation. One thing that's unique about Boulder compared to some other cities is that we treat restaurants, brewpubs, and taverns as all the same line in the use table. Some other cities would have would have like a different line for restaurants and different line for taverns or bars. But we we treat them all as the same line in the use table, so we find that the hours of operation are a good differentiating factor between what's a restaurant and what's a bar. So typically, if it closes by eleven, it probably really is a restaurant. If it has a later opening hours, those those tend to act more like bars or taverns and tend to perhaps have a greater impact on neighbors. So that's the reason for having the size and the hours of operation. If a restaurant wanted to be larger than four thousand square feet or open later, they would still have the opportunity to pursue a use review, which is how that works in most of those districts now. And then one of the other things I wanted to highlight, so on the last slide, I said that patio size is also a main differentiating factor for restaurants right now about whether they can be allowed by right or need a use review. We've proposed in this ordinance a different approach that we think ends up at the kind of same solution or the same endpoint, but has a different procedural route. A lot of times, we'll have restaurants go through the use review process, and what happens through the use review is then standards are attached to that approval that we found are tend to be kind of the same type of standard, so they tend to be about noise, music, trash collection. So the idea with this ordinance is to just set those standards as general standards for all outdoor seating that that's near residential. So rather than having that be the trigger that turns shifts people into needing a use review, there would just be those standards that apply whether you're, when you're close to residential areas. And so you kind of, as I said, you end up in the same place, but you've taken a different route. And then the real intent is to streamline the approval. Place, but you've taken a different route. Um, and then the real intent is to streamline the approval processes and get more restaurants. Um, to be able to go through the allowed by right option rather than use review. Which right now, the regulations with the low size of a thousand and fifteen hundred. Is, and the patio size is really catching a lot of the restaurants and almost, oh, many restaurants needing use review. So that's the first group. Yeah, Laura.
Um, thank you, Lisa. I just wanted to check in on something that I think may be important to some of our folks from the public who are here tonight. Based on some of the public comment that we received. As I understand it, the proposed changes for this project about use tables. It doesn't touch upon that standard of fifty percent of your revenue has to come from food. I, I know I was listening into a city council meeting, I think last week. And, um, you, it was specifically about University Hill and some suggested changes that were being proposed, some of them by the business community. And that standard about fifty percent of your revenue has to come from food was something that they were proposing changing. And I just want to make sure that this project would not change that standard if I'm understanding correctly. This is just about. What size of restaurant and closing hours and patio size can be allowed without a use review?
Yeah, thanks Laura. Thanks for the opportunity to clarify that. So because the University Hill area is within the B M S zoning districts, the way that the ordinance that's in your packet is drafted. Actually would eliminate those use standards, um, specifically the one you're mentioning with the fifty percent food. Because it would be consolidated with these other districts, so it would be limited to just the size and the hours of operation as the allowed by right. So as the ordinance is drafted before you, um, for your review tonight. Um, it does eliminate those unique standards for the hill and instead consolidates it with these other kind of interface zoning district standards.
Oh, okay. So I was wrong. This would change that. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, I can just interrupt as long as we've brought it up. Um, I want to both say that, um, I have, I'm gonna have a proposal to address that, um, Laura, just. At the flag, but I'm wondering, Lisa, if you can just speak to whether or not there was. Um, specific targeted public engagement on that partic- this particular issue, the removal, the. Moving of B M S in the. You should.
U G I. You did.
You did. Uh, uh, um, and the changing of the regulate or the requirements around it. Or was, was there any specific public engagement on that issue?
Sure. So, um, just for those who don't know that acronym, U G I is the University Hill General Improvement District. So that's what we use in the code. Um, so there wasn't a specific question like on the questionnaire about the University Hill General Improvement District. Um, you know, the, the questionnaire and the story map was focused on all of the neighborhoods, centers of the city. And so University Hill is one of those neighborhood centers and. As far as the proposed changes for University Hill, it just said streamline approval processes. So it was fairly general. It didn't say specifically. Um, you know, remove the specific fifty percent food requirement from there. Um, there was, there's a balance in that public engagement of getting too into the weeds too much with details. Um, and scaring too many people off. So we wanted to keep it fairly broad in general and get the input on, on all of the neighborhood centers. I will say in terms of the timing, um, we went to a city council study session for their input and I will have slides later that summarize that. Um, a few weeks ago and several of the city council members recommended that staff. Um, actually pull the, the hill standards into kind of this, this similar umbrella with the other like D T one, two and three. Um, and, and look at having the similar standards to downtown be- between the downtown and the hills. So that's where this ordinance. Um, uh, ended up for you to look at tonight.
Okay, thanks Lisa.
So if I understand what you said correctly, you use the closing time currently as sort of the discriminator between. What is a restaurant and what is a bar to them, right?
Yeah, that's what, and we had that in already in many of these districts, the hours of operation in the kind of closer interface areas.
But this fifty percent of revenue from food threshold is also sort of a discriminator. So would, conceptually, would it work to combine those and say. In effect, a restaurant is something that closes by eleven P M and has. Fifty percent or more of its revenue from food.
Um, it could be, I think that would get kind of complex because they, the fifty percent is a. Different rule than what a hotel restaurant liquor license can have. So a hotel restaurant liquor license can have, uh, which is what most restaurants have. Um, they are only required to have twenty-five percent of their revenue from food. Um, or income from food, whatever the difference is. For that, I'm not a financial person. Um, so I think it gets, uh, it would get complex if we did that overall for all restaurants as a definition. And I think that's why we've gotten away from. Um, from defining it that way.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Uh, any other questions right now on this particular topic? Alright, please go ahead, Lisa.
Thanks. Those are really helpful clarifications. I appreciate it. Um, okay. And then I just wanted to highlight, so we actually do allow restaurants already in some of our higher density residential. Districts or R H three and R H seven. You can see on the map that this is a pretty small area of the city. Um, but right now they're allowed, if they're a thousand square feet and closed by eleven, otherwise they're prohibited. There's no option for a use review. So in light of, um, the other changes citywide. We also are recommending increasing the size in R H three and R H seven. Um, so that the, um, maximum size would be two thousand and that would capture a few more. Um, one example, it's not in R H three or R H seven, but Alpine Modern is in Residential Zoning District, the cafe. Um, that's twelve hundred square feet. So even that wouldn't fall into allowed by right. So we just thought that. Um, two thousand might capture some more of those, um, smaller coffee shop type uses that people might want to see in R H three and R H seven. Um, but again, prohibited, otherwise there wouldn't be any way to get a larger one. And then similar, um, general patio standards rather than. Um. Rather than using that as the trigger for use review. The third and final grouping of residential changes is really focused on our, um, higher intensity. Business zones and downtown zones. That's kind of the southern side of downtown is D T four and five, as well as B C, B C S and B R. You can see those areas highlighted on the map. Right now, there isn't a size limit or hours of operation in those districts. This is really the area where we're trying to encourage these types of uses. Um, where people expect high intensity use. Um, but there is one requirement, um, related to patio size. So if a restaurant in any of these areas has a patio that's over three hundred square feet and they're close to residential districts, they get kicked into use review. So in light of streamlining approval processes, um, these are mostly the, the actual neighborhood centers is the zoning. Um, and we heard a lot of support through the public, um, about supporting outdoor seating and restaurants. Uh, we're recommending in the ordinance to remove that use review requirement. And like I said, we would still have the general standards for outdoor seating that would apply. If a restaurant is close to residential, so you'd still have those noise and music. Um, and trash collection, things like that in place. It just wouldn't trigger the use review process. I wanted to highlight what we've heard related to restaurants in terms of public input. So kind of those three groups I talked about, and then the summer twenty twenty-three engagement is. Everything we heard from the questionnaire and also our in-person engagement. We heard a significant amount of support for more restaurants in the neighborhood centers, um, almost unanimous from everyone we talked to. Uh, support for making the city process easier for restaurants to open in the city. A lot of people were surprised. That it's challenging, um, to open a restaurant or that we require a use review for almost every restaurant, um. In the city and a lot of support for wanting to see more outdoor seating. I think that, um. The opinions on outdoor seating have definitely changed in the last few years with COVID and different, um, desires for people wanting to sit outside and have. That patio option. From the public working group, also a lot of support, um, for restaurant changes. We did talk a bit with the public working group. About making sure that the, the hill standard, unique standards remain. This was before the city council direction. Um, some design items about patios and what makes them, um, pedestrian friendly. Planning board liaisons, uh, we talked about the difference between local restaurants and chains and how we differentiate between those. Overall supportive of those changes. And then community connectors and residents. Also, we talked about supporting resident, more restaurants in the community. As a way to support local businesses and entrepreneurship, um, as well as just providing more affordable and ethnically diverse restaurants. They also brought up food truck regulations I mentioned in the memo. Um, that's a really complex part of the code that we think could be. Um, a separate project where we could do, um, more focused engagement on food trucks because. Um, I think the rules were written in twenty eleven, so they might be due for an update, but not within the scope of this project, basically. Alright, so that's it for restaurants. The next topic was related to duplexes and townhomes in the B T or business transitional districts. As you see on the map, the B T districts are kind of small strips that are essentially the transition between the larger. Intensity, um, or higher intensity business zones like our B R zones or B C zones and residential zones. So it truly is a transitional district. Right now, they currently require, our use review is currently required in B T if a duplex or townhome. Is located on the ground floor. Um, there's, we have a similar requirement in the B C and B R zoning districts as well, but the. Just focuses on B T for this change. So in thinking through that comprehensive plan policy that I mentioned, uh, the transition of intensity out to the single-family residential areas. We thought that B T is a, the, uh, additional zone may, probably makes good sense for middle housing to be located as. Kind of the transition from the intent, higher intensity to lower int- intensity. So by removing that barrier for duplexes and townhomes, um, it might incentivize those to be located in B T. I would note that there is a similar requirement for attached dwelling units, so attached dwelling units are not allowed to be on the ground floor in these districts. So. By keeping that for attached dwelling units, removing it for duplexes and townhomes, we think that could incentivize some more missing middle housing.
Lisa, can I just interrupt you for a second?
Okay.
Thanks. You, you mentioned in the memo that townhomes don't really make sense, not on the ground floor anyhow, right?
Right.
And so, w- but we still have that, or you're proposing to retain that requirement in the B C and B R zone districts. So essentially that prohibits townhomes in those z- zone districts. Is that correct?
It doesn't prohibit them. It just requires a use review. So they're not allowed, there, it doesn't mean they're not allowed at all. It just, they have to go through a, a separate process. So it essentially by maintaining that in any of these districts, it ensures that a use review is necessary for a townhome.
Wait, I'm sorry. Can we just clarify, Kurt, were you talking about B T or B C?
I was talking about B C and B R, the ones that aren't proposed to be changed. But the, there's still, at least for B C, there's still a restriction on. Townhomes on the ground floor. So that was my confusion.
So, um, thanks for the clarification. And I also have a night, a thought about that, that I'm gonna propose when we get to our discussion, so. Any other questions at the moment about, uh, duplexes and townhomes? Okay, look, Lisa, please pick up where you were.
Okay, um, just a summary of what we've heard through the public input for duplexes and townhomes. Lots of support for missing or middle housing in neighborhood centers. A lot of people expressed surprise that they were restricted now. Um, and some comments about how having a mix of uses in the neighborhood centers would add to the vibrancy of the center. Public working group, planning board liaisons, also supportive of these changes, perhaps needs a good balance so that it doesn't become just residential. Um, also talking about area planning for the neighborhood centers as a way to guide the future there too. Community connectors also supported more duplexes and townhomes, uh, throughout the city. Okay, and then finally is the miscellaneous, um, changes. So these are the proposed use allowance or standard changes. Um, so I, I'll go through, there are changes in our public and institutional part of the use table and then also commercial. Like I mentioned before, our planning board subcommittee back in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty did a row by row, column by column analysis of the use table. And identified many of these changes as potential opportunities to improve walkability. Staff also did our own analysis. Um, and then this is also informed by the, the public input. So in terms of public and institutional changes. Allowing community services in our mixed-use zoning districts and our public zoning districts. I'll note that. Um, just a point of interest, Boulder was very early in adopting mixed-use zoning. So we had mixed-use zoning in the early eighties where a lot of cities. Didn't have it until the twenty-two thousands. Um, and so in doing that, we were kind of. Caught in this early adopter issue where we maybe dipped our toes in the water fairly cautiously in terms of mixed use. Um, so now that we're looking at it kind of forty years later, um, there's a number of uses that you look at the use table and you're kind of surprised, oh, that's not allowed in a mixed-use district. So some of those just kind of, um, came to light as we were doing the analysis for this.
Lisa, I'm sorry, um, let me just interrupt. Mark, you have your hand up.
Yes, I, I quickly. I, I was, um. And maybe I just should have read more closely. I could not really find the definition of community services. Could you expand? On what is included in community services is. By those two words put together, it's a very, very broad category.
It is one of our broad categories. So, um, if it helps, it used to be called public or private office use. And then we renamed it to community services in module one. So it essentially said, it's an office for a, um, benevolent, philanthropic. Um, patriotic, I think we also say in the definition, kind of like doing good, um, nonprofit often. Uh, type of office.
So, community services doesn't include any more mundane services of. Hair salons, nail, so, nothing of, of that sort.
No, that would be personal services. That's another, a broad category, but yeah, personal services would be things like hair salons, bakeries. Nail shops, tattoo parlors, things like that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Kurt?
Uh, I'm curious why we distinguish or why we are more restrictive about animal hospitals and that clinics. Than medical offices. It seems like to me that they should be treated pretty similarly. I'm just curious why.
Oh, you gave me the best opportunity to make my zoning joke, which is that, uh, we're concerned about barking and parking.
Well.
Um, I think they can, I mean, the concern is that the clients might be a little louder or, or rowdier than, um, a medical office. Uh, but that's certainly something that we could take direction from you, um, or a recommendation that, that could be treated as a medical office. Um, it's often if it was a use that was prohibited, we were trying to make the changes like one step down, so it was prohibited. So then go to use review. If something was use review, we often change that to allowed. Um, but yeah, barking.
Okay, thank you. And then similar question about small theater slash rehearsal space. Small theater slash rehearsal space sounds like. About the most benign use you could possibly imagine. But if we still require a use review, can you talk about?
Yes, yeah, so it allows up to three hundred seats. Um, so it's not, it's not tiny. Um, and I think that the rationale for some of these that are use reviews is that when there's a use where a lot of people are coming at one time. That tends to have a greater impact on the surrounding properties. And that's really what a use review is for, is to be able to look at that particular use in that particular location. Be able to perhaps add some conditions that could help or standards that could help, um, mitigate any potential impact. So with things like theaters or museums, um, that's where we thought that a use review might be warranted over just allowed by right. So that we get the more, um, the, the more fine-grained review of those types of uses.
Thank you.
Um. Okay, go ahead, please, Lisa.
Okay, many bullets on this slide. Uh, governmental facility, I mentioned that we heard a lot about post offices, so that's what a post office is called in the use table. So allowing those in more places, um, obviously we don't have any control over the United States Postal Service, but at least we wouldn't have a barrier in the zoning code. Um, for it in these mixed-use and public zoning districts. I mentioned museums already, taking it from prohibited to use review in M U one, two and three, and then from use review to allowed in the public zoning district. Um, already had the opportunity to talk about animal hospitals, medical offices, um, allowing those with a size limit, so just a small medical office. Non-vehicular repair and rental, that's like your vacuum repair shop, things like that, not related to cars, but repair and rental of any kind. Allowing those in size with a size limit in several districts, outdoor recreation and entertainment. Um, retail allowing at a small scale, that's something that we heard a lot from people, just small-scale retail, so not the. You know, twelve thousand square foot big box store, but a small retail shop that, where you could support local business. Already mentioned this small theater and then temporary event, that was just one we identified, we allow in all the business in downtown zones, but don't allow. Um, in our mixed-use or public zone, so just aligning that with the other districts. So that's kind of the, um, miscellaneous section. What we've heard on these changes. I already mentioned, people want to see more post offices, lots of support for whatever we can do to support the arts, small theaters, music venues, which would fall under that category. And general support for all of the other changes. Um, through our public working group and planning board liaison. And general support for all of the other changes, um, through our public working group and planning board liaisons as well. Um, had a good conversation with the community connectors about, again, supporting small businesses and ensuring that there's affordable community commercial space and, um, directly talking, they talked about community services as something what they wanted to see a change for. So that's incorporated in the ordinance as well. And then I think this is my final slide. So I did just want to brief you on the feedback we got from city council. We went to a study session with them on July twenty seventh and they saw a very similar presentation of what you're seeing, um, and asked for their direction. So related to restaurants, city council expressed support for streamlining the standards for restaurants in the review process. Several of the city council members encouraged staff to streamline the regulations on the hill, similarly to the changes that, um, were proposed to downtown. So we talked about that earlier. Uh, in terms of downtowns or duplexes and townhomes, uh, we had originally for the public input proposed changes to both BT and BR. Um, council expressed some concerns about those changes, seeing that those areas really is focused on or prioritized for commercial and not wanting to see residential takeover. Um, one council member said, maybe it made more sense in the BT zoning district, but not the BR. So that's reflected in the ordinance as well. Um, with just the BT as the change. And then in terms of the other changes, they were supportive of those changes. There are a couple extra that they thought weren't necessary to the project. So those have been removed from the, um, are, are they're not included in the ordinance, uh, that's changes to hostels and clubs or lodges, which are like Masonic lodges. Um, so those are, that was the feedback related to the focus areas tonight. And that is my whole presentation. So I can stop and take other questions.
So before we get to questions, what I'm gonna, um, ask, uh, the folks in the public to do is if you want to speak to this particular item now, please raise your electronic hand. Uh, if there are more than fifteen people whose hands have gone up, we're gonna limit, uh, comment to two minutes each. So I want to try to get a head count or a hand, a hand count before we go there. Um, and, and this was a good opportunity. Please put up your hand and then we'll go back to Q and A. We'll go back to Q and A with staff. And once we have a hand count, I'll let folks know whether it's two minutes or three minutes. Um, so who has questions for Lisa? Does anyone have questions? Wow, that's impressive. Uh, what, there, ML, please go ahead.
Sorry, Sarah. I was looking at my paper to see if I had a question. Um, thanks, Lisa, for your presentation. And, um, I know I have seen this all before, but something struck me that I hadn't noticed before in, um, changing the square footage, and I think this was restaurants, from a thousand to fifteen hundred, that had been sort of the standard um, to four thousand. It seemed like it's a really large increase. Um, were there any inputs as to the impact of doing that? Are there? What's that going to do to, uh, uh, in reality on the ground? What are we gonna start seeing? Um, as insofar as restaurants, what's a four thousand square foot restaurant versus a fifteen hundred square foot restaurant? When so much of the public input seemed to be about small?
Yeah, that's a great question. I, I think what we did was look at a number of restaurants that have been approved that are larger than fifteen hundred. Like I mentioned, most restaurants, um, or many restaurants have to go through that use review process. Um, so just as an example, um, so the Med, when it was open, it was about three thousand square feet in size. Um, Foolish Craig's is twenty five hundred. I mentioned that Alpine Modern is twelve hundred. Uh, if you've been to the new Zomama, I don't know if it's open, that anyone's open yet, but that's twenty four hundred. Um, that was a Chipotle. So if you can picture the size of a typical Chipotle before, that's twenty four hundred. So the four thousand, it was a number that was already in, um, in the code for the hill. Um, so that's kind of a typical, you know, it's a historic commercial area. So that would capture, we thought that that would capture many of the restaurants. Um, you know, in the downtown area and kind of the size and scale of that, um, to make sure that that would be captured under four thousand. Um, and then just larger restaurants, like chain restaurants, an average size of like a Chili's is six thousand. So things like that would be over the scale of four thousand. So that's where we landed on four thousand being um, kind of a good differentiator between the more local business sized, um, and scaled restaurants versus the larger chains. Granted, we would still have development standards like parking and things like that, that if they have a larger size, they have a larger parking requirement that they need to meet and things like that. Um, so we think that the other standards in the code would indicate any impacts, um, from the larger size.
Thank you for that.
Alright, so, um, Mark, I'll call on you in just one moment. So we have six hands raised. So you'll have, everyone will have three minutes to speak when we get to public comment. Mark, please go ahead.
Uh, hi, Lisa. Thank you. Um, I have additional comments, of course, but I, I have a question. And would you characterize the changes in module three to actually allow for, or to improve the chances of developing a new neighborhood center? Or are these all really focused around existing neighborhood centers? And enhancing them and simplifying the code, which is all laudable. But my question is, does any of the, do, do you consider any of these changes to be significant enough to allow for a new neighborhood center where one does not exist currently?
Interesting question. So I think that the focus of this really has been on the existing neighborhood centers and what we can do to improve them. But one thing about the changes is that the, you know, if we change standards in the BT zoning district because BT is located within gun barrel, that affects PT everywhere throughout the city. So um, it might be that BT zoning is not within another neighborhood center, but now we've opened up a new use there. Um, so I think there could be a small impact on the, um, areas of the city that are technically within a neighborhood center, but are within the zoning districts that are impacted by these changes. Uh, but that wasn't necessarily the, the focus of these, the module three ordinance.
Okay, just a quick follow-on. Did, did you calculate what percentage of Boulder's residents are within a fifteen-minute walk of a neighborhood center?
We are working with our GIS team to do that. It's more complicated than it seems like it should be. We have some, there's some great walk shed information in some of our transportation plans, um, which gives like a really cool red, yellow, and green map. And you can see the neighborhoods. When we looked into that, because that's where we kind of started for the story map and what, how we wanted to develop it. But when we looked into the data, it just wasn't perfect with the kind of services that were included in that data. So we couldn't use that necessarily. But, um, we are working on the, the flip side of that, of looking at the neighborhood centers and what's fifty, within fifteen minutes from there. Um, so we'll have that shortly. But, um, but yeah, I think it, it's obviously a complex issue that is both land use and transportation. And they're doing great work on the transportation side too on this. Uh, this is just the land use piece.
All right, great. Thank you.
Any other questions at this time? I know Lisa won't go anywhere. So if we have questions during our deliberations, we can always, um, ask her to magically appear back on the screen. Okay, so no questions for now. I'm Lisa. First of all, thanks to you and Carl for logging your way through, obviously very complex work. Um, and I'm sure you're looking to get across the finish line. We really appreciate that. Um, alright, so we can turn now to public comments. Um, uh, everyone will have three minutes. And Vivian is going to be the ma- the mistress of ceremonies. Uh, so Vivian, go ahead, please.
Thank you. So, so far we have six hands raised and we'll start with Jake Hudson-Humphrey, followed by Lynn Segal and Devin will be helping us out with the, with the timer. Um, please go ahead. Jake, you have three minutes. And you may have done it yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, perfect.
Awesome. My name's Jake Hudson-Humphrey. I am with the Hill, University Hill Merchants Association. So we represent businesses within the University Hill General Improvement District. Um, I'm here to speak in support of removing the regulations that prevent Hill businesses, uh, that serve alcohol from staying open past eleven PM, as well as the regulations that require fifty percent of sales come from food. Um, so I believe that these regulations unfairly hurt businesses in a district that's already struggling. We have a lot of turnover in, in the Hill District. We constantly have businesses, uh, going out of business. We've got tons of vacancies. Um, and this is a problem that's been happening for years. Uh, and we basically, our district needs all the help that it can get. Uh, we're the most regulated district in Boulder when it comes to these kind of use restrictions. Um, and as I said, it's an already struggling district. So we are very wary of losing business to, uh, businesses open that are able to open later, uh, in the rest of the city and outside of Boulder. Um, so a- and then in addition to that, people need a safe and supervised space to consume alcohol. Uh, we understand that a lot of the concerns specifically around the Hill comes from, you know, uh, very valid concerns about uh, overconsumption and some of the issues that have presented themselves on the Hill. Um, however, it's important to remember that having a safe and supervised space to consume alcohol, you know, after eleven PM, which is when the majority of that happens, that leads to less overconsumption. That leads to less underage drinking. Um, and it really does help get that activity out of the neighborhood, which is a big concern. Um, so if we're, if we allow that to happen in the district where it's supervised, where it's more regulated, uh, that's really gonna keep it from behind closed doors and it's gonna get it, you know, back into a safer, more supervised space. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Jake. Um, next we have Lynn Segal, followed by Jonathan Singer. Lynn, you have, uh, three minutes. Please go ahead.
Um, yeah, um, I just think we should get rid of booze entirely in all of Boulder and set it up so that the, the hours are, um, are fine if people want to stay up without booze. Uh, um, it's kind of like create a problem of booze and then fix the problem of booze. And I'm really kind of surprised that there, that only twenty-five percent of our sales tax revenue is food. I think if we got rid of booze, people would be eating more. They might be getting fat, but they could always run. It's an athletic community. And, um, and, and that would, um, just it, it's kind of like homelessness. It's like a problem. And I don't see us creating more problems. Um, the big restaurants, maybe not quite that big at four K. Um, I'd like to see neighborhood centers with themes rather than just the same thing in each neighborhood, the same, like, you know, like, there should be an art theme in one place or woodworking theme in another place, or, uh, you know, lots of different ones, not just these five or six big ones. And there should be micro centers like, um, two blocks from me is Maxwell the Daisy Grocery. That should be, I, I think you should be zoning for specific shops. You should have a zone where that's a shoe repair stop. Shop, and that's what it has to be. And then when somebody leaves because the rent's too high, they're not gonna evacuate the place and add insult to injury in the landfill, redoing the whole thing for a different repurposing. Um, so let's see, yeah, the, the, like, there are plenty of specific store types we need. For example, I mean, it's very simple with ideal. We need a pharmacy or a drugstore or whatever. Um, and what you anchor with is really important. Maybe Waterview does need a brew pub because they're out there isolated and there's nothing to do. And within that place, there's a garage on every single unit of Waterview. It's just a sprawling community. But as the sprawl fills in, the way that we're developing, which I'm really opposed to, like, that's what I was speaking about at Kanamoto today, the edge of Longmont, just wanting to, um, expand the density right to the ends. I say, wait, you know, until Jared Polis gets his dirty work done and the, the infill happens, then entertain developers. Until then, don't even entertain it.
Thank you, Lynn. Thank you, Lynn. Um, next we have Jonathan Singer, followed by Byron Wheeler. Please go ahead, Jonathan.
Good evening, Planning Board. I'm Jonathan Singer. I'm the Senior Director of Policy Programs with the Boulder Chamber. And, uh, I am here to support the staff recommendation as it stands right now. I want to thank, uh, Lisa, Carl, and, uh, really the entire staff for their due diligence on this, uh, entire effort. This has been yeoman's work over multiple years, dealing with multiple stakeholders, trying to balance sometimes some competing interests and, and oftentimes interests that um, coalesce in very interesting ways. Uh, I, I know that the, arguably, the, the largest red flag or, or elephant in the room here is going to be around the University Hill, uh, uh, General Improvement District, which I will not even try to pronounce the acronym there. And what I have to say is, um, if you, if you listened to city council the other night, um, we heard numerous city council members opine on the, the lack of progress in that area over the last decade. Um, if all of the different rules, regulations, and ordinances that were put in place in the University Hill General Improvement District were in fact working, um, we wouldn't have nuisance issues, um, on the University Hill. We would have a thriving district, providing a great uh, sales tax base for our community. We would have a wonderful community gathering place like, um, it once was. And while there are some glimmers of hope, being able to standardize a process that we give businesses of all sizes, but especially small businesses, a reasonable degree of certainty while they're going through the application and review process actually, uh, provides new opportunities for innovative, smaller businesses to step into a place that needs to be vital as we have our conference center coming in there, uh, shortly. Um, and, and back to the, the safety issue and some of the nuisance concerns. I, I think, uh, Council Member Matt Benjamin put it perfectly, uh, the other night, uh, when he said, look, you know, when I was in college, we were, oh, we, we were able to, you know, avail ourselves of bars and restaurants in the Hill area. Um, getting rid of those, those opportunities didn't get rid of the problem. It just moved it into the neighborhoods. Um, let's do something in a way that deals with the problems in a correct place and time, but also provides new opportunities to bring the Hill back to where it used to be, and perhaps even in, in a better place. Uh, I'll, I'll be around. Um, so certainly feel free to, uh, I, I'll be listening in for the comments. But I want to thank everyone for their due diligence and their care on this process.
Thank you, Jonathan. Um, next up we have Byron Wheeler, followed by Garrett Baum. Please go ahead, By- uh, Byron.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you. Good evening, Planning Board. Uh, I'm here to advocate on behalf of the business community in the University Hill District by showing support of the deregulation of the alcohol-related use restrictions within the General Improvement District, including the mandated eleven PM closing time. So in University Hill, less than a quarter of all the restaurants in the area are actually able to be open past eleven o'clock, despite these being some of the busiest and highest demand hours from the customers in the area. I own a restaurant on the Hill and I estimate, based on my completely full restaurants, every Friday and Saturday at the time I'm forced to close, that my annual revenues are decreased by up to fifteen percent as a result of this regulation. And I'm helpless as a business owner as I watch my customers flood into neighboring restaurants because they have a grandfathered right to serve at a later hour. Businesses in the Hill District are struggling more than any other part of the city, yet we're among the most regulated businesses in terms of hours of operation. And we're being forced to close during our busiest hours with our greatest upside potential in revenues. Allowing Hill restaurants that serve alcohol to stay open later with fewer regulations around percentage of food sales will significantly help these businesses improve their revenues and will improve the economic health of the district as a whole. I'd also like to emphasize that restaurants serving alcohol in a safe, supervised, and regulated way helps limit the overconsumption and underage drinking compared to them drinking at home or in their dorms. The Hill serves primarily students, many of whom have a safe place to consume alcohol. Uh, I'm sorry, many of whom want to have a safe place to consume alcohol, but are unable to do so on the Hill after eleven P O. As we examine these proposed changes, which I'm a full supporter of everything that you guys have done and, and, and proposed here tonight, I strongly encourage you to include deregulating the required eleven PM closing time uh, for the restaurants on the Hill and allow the businesses to serve the needs of their target customers in a controlled and safe environment. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Byron. Um, next up we have Garrett Baum, followed by Lisa Spalding. Please go ahead. Thank you, Byron. Um, next up we have Garrett Baum, followed by Lisa Spalding. Please go ahead, Garrett. Timer is up.
Hi, thank you very much. Um, my name's Garrett Baum. I uh, it's, this is difficult. I have not written out uh anything to discuss. But you know, part of what, first of all, I'm in favor of what the first person said and then the last two as well. Um, they uh, it was brought up that uh, there's a lack of progress on the hill uh for a decade. And and I'm I'm a bit insulted by that and 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 in a good way. Um, you know, we purchased the Flatiron Theater ten years ago and we won an award from the Historic Boulder for what we did there. And we put tenants in and I've had four tenants leave. And the reason they've left is because of the draconian rules that have been put in place that do not allow businesses to succeed there. Um, you know, the the w- when the rules went in place, it was, oh, the students are coming down, they're drinking, they're throwing up on their way home. Uh, we gotta fix it, so let's just stop drinking on the hill. Well, you know, there, we invested millions in that building after purchasing it. We invested two million dollars in a restaurant that you're all familiar with, Rosenberg's Bagels, that is no longer there. Okay. The businesses that are no longer in Boulder on the hill are not there because of the rules that were enacted that have been uh, that have negatively impacted those businesses. The drinking problem or drinking youth, uh, the third person that spoke, that's not going to go away because you've got limits on times for or or when when restaurants can be open. So, you know, one of our businesses, yes, a small portion of their uh sales were from alcohol. I'm working with another tenant right now and a hundred percent of their sales would come from food. They don't even plan alcohol. But the fact that they would be limited with when they can serve food um could become a problem. And I don't want to see a fifth business go out of business on the hill. So, you know, we've got our problem unique to our building, but as you've heard from some of the other restaurants or building owners, there are problems that every property owner and every business has up on the hill. So it is, there's proof over the last decade that the rules have not worked. There's crime on the hill. There's an incredible amount of of vagrancy. There's been, you know, I can't tell you how much graffiti and feces and the way you solve the problem is by encouraging business development, encouraging businesses to come, help them succeed to succeed instead of hurting their chances of succeeding. And you can do that by allowing businesses to come in, function the way they're supposed to and um and encourage residents and others, not just from the hill, to frequent the hill. And and that'll happen if you're proactive and help the businesses succeed by by re- uh loosening the rules on the hill. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Um, next we have Lisa Spalding, followed by Stephen Walsh. And I'd just like to ask if anybody else would like to speak to, please also raise your hand so that we we know how many people would still like to speak. Lisa, please go ahead.
Lisa, you're muted. Spalding, um, I'm representing the University Hill Neighborhood Association. Before I start, I would just like to correct the gentleman who spoke before me. The restaurants can stay open until two and serve food. The close is only if they're serving alcohol. So the University Hill Neighborhood was stunned by the news that the city may roll back the guardrails placed on hill liquor licenses ten years ago. City Council spent almost a year crafting regulations that they passed unanimously in October of twenty thirteen. The attempt to streamline the code for bars and restaurants would effectively remove these guardrails, but it would have an extremely in- negative impact on the hill. The gar- the um background to the guardrails is important since it involves land use and the planning board. Thunderbird Burgers was a bar on the hill that was staying open until two AM without going through uh the required use review. In two thousand and four, the planning board ruled that Thunderbird could serve food until two AM but had to stop serving liquor at eleven. Thunderbird filed a lawsuit against the city that went all the way to the Colorado Court of Appeals. The court ruled that the city could not impinge on state liquor law that set closings at two AM. However, it could and should use its land use code to limit the hours of operation in order to control problems. The only exempted, the um, the hill has, there's only one kind of a liquor license that you can get and it's a hotel restaurant license. The percentage is very low for food. It's twenty-five percent. You would never get insurance as a restaurant if you only sold twenty-five percent food. So um, these, these restaurants, it was a bait and switch that was going on. The restaurant, they would call themselves a restaurant, they would apply for a liquor license, they would ha- go through a use review for a two AM close. And these use reviews turned into giant screaming matches between neighbors and bars. We had seventeen bars on the hill. It was just horrible. Anyway, um, I I would like to say that having the concentration of bars on the hill did not reduce the parties in the neighborhood. Underage students drank at parties and twenty-one and over drank at bars. I served on the liquor board for ten years and I can pull police reports that show bars are not safe supervised places for students to drink. Please remove this element and allow the city to deal with it separately. They need to do research and get public comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Um, next we have Stephen Walsh, followed by Tel Jones. Please go ahead, Stephen.
Thank you, planning board, and thank you for having me and thank you for three minutes. This is a discussion that really would take me three hours. Um, to echo what Lisa who before me said, uh, I was one of the hill residents that worked so hard to bring the hill back from a place that was lethal to some students and paralyzed a police officer during one of the riots nineteen ninety-six when we bought our home there. It was a mess and um, we worked really, really hard for many, many years um to help clean up the hill. And the hill is a lot better place today than it was in nineteen ninety-six. The speaker before Lisa is Garrett Baum. He was a uh client of mine. Uh, when we formed the New Hill Company, it was a private effort to create a quasi-public process to vision what the hill could look like and what it would take to make the hill look like that, using stakeholders from about uh eight different cohorts, including students, bar owners, um, fraternities, hill residents, university and several others, uh faith-based community. And we achieved a consensus vision of what that looks like. And it was formalized or memorialized in what's called the Hill Community Context Report Study. And that's something that we could send you. Um, what I would say is the institutional memory of our neighborhood, the University Hill, is short. We have uncovered uh meeting notes from University Neighborhood Association from thirty, forty years ago, this cycle of people coming in and out of the neighborhood, in and out of the community, the commercial district. The stakeholders have never stayed long. Um, I don't recognize anybody now on the hill that was there present there before with the exception of the sink and um and Garrett Baum. We did good work. Uh, there's a study that should be looked at, but the the really the conclusion was, and I strongly feel the hill na- uh commercial district will never be able to support quality uh inner uh dining establishments that include liquor and food sales until the brand of the hill is cleaned up. And it's never going to happen until the hill redevelops. What we're seeing at the north end with the Hill Hotel and Catty Corner Two at the University Conference Center are things we envisioned fifteen years ago in our in our work. And that is the sign of hope for the hill. That's what needs to be addressed. When those kinds of properties are developed and the landlords have the level of state stake that they have, the establishments will be run responsibly. But to leave the the, you know, the general building supply out there now to um anybody that wants to open a bar is a real, it's a very risky enterprise. And there's no ordinance in the world that's going to prevent um someone from taking advantage of the community.
Thank you, Stephen. Thank you. Next we have Tel Jones, um, and he is the last speaker. Please go ahead, Tel. You have three minutes.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you all for everything. I appreciate it. It's been awesome to learn all the different insight on this subject. Um, I support Jake Hudson and what he said a hundred percent as far as the hill goes. I've been with the sink for ten years. Um, so I'm pretty sure I only know what the rule is now or the law is now. Um, I kind of feel after talking to neighborhood uh people as I I like community and whatnot, um, I I I think we all kind of agree that this is an experiment for ten years and it really hasn't gotten us anywhere. Um, I've also known that, noticed that the block parties from, this is from neighbors on the hill, uh residents on the hill, that the block parties have gotten even worse. And when I, you know, recently swing by these places as I'm walking back to my car, um, I noticed that, you know, these house parties are five hundred, seven hundred fifty, up to a thousand people in certain fraternities with two-door guys. And I believe that it's probably safer to open up the hill to monitor these kids. You know, in my situation, I would probably have four security guards as well as multiple managers watching and making sure these kids aren't going over the limit. Um, that's what I'm hearing. That's all I noticed. Like I said, I've only been here for ten years. Um, it seems like an experiment that didn't work. There's not anybody that comes in trying to um boost their sales based on alcohol after eleven or based on sales after eleven period. It seems like most people have gone down to Pearl Street and Pearl Street only and or house parties. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Tel. Okay, no other hands raised, Sarah.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm I'm going to propose a five-minute break and then we'll come back and have our uh public, uh, I'm not public, I'm sorry, our uh dialogue amongst ourselves. So we will be back at seven twenty-eight. Am I correct, Vivian, about that timing? All right, we'll see each other at seven twenty-eight.
That's correct, and we'll put up a slide.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Um, so I know that George has not very good connections, so he will only pop up when he has something to say. But Laura, Mark and ML, if uh you are, if you are at your desks, please show your beautiful face. Okay, all right, um, and the staff back? Everyone's back. Lisa, just so I know you're there. Lisa Hood, Lisa Hood, sorry.
I'm here.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. So we're all back. Um, we've already gone over our allotted hour for this, so um, I'm going to hope, hopefully we'll be able to have our conversation and vote uh within a half an hour time period. If not, we'll go longer, but let's see if we can keep it to an hour, a half an hour. Um, I think my, what I'm going to propose is that we just go quickly around the horn uh and people can comment on uh concerns that they are, topics that they would like to discuss further. Um, and then we can see what what has co- what, where there's some common concerns and then we'll go back and visit those. So because George has bad um connectivity, I'll start with George.
Um, I I'm I'm generally supportive of um, of the way it's been proposed by staff. I don't have many. I I I understand that the the issues around the hill um, I happen to work with restaurants and bars and things like that in my professional life. Um, not in Boulder, but um outside of here and I'm a generally sympathetic to what they were saying in regards to um just things overflowing into other areas rather than really solving much of a problem there. So uh, that's that's generally sort of my lens on things. Um, but I don't have much to add. Uh, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Okay, thanks. Lisa.
Yeah, I think as often is the case, but not always very similar to what George you just said, I think the rough thing with the Hill is that I think, and this is true of the most challenging things that come before us and just the most challenging planning issues in general is that both sides are correct, right? Like both of these things are simultaneously true. It is true that the restrictions that are currently in place from a business perspective are fairly draconian and are causing really high turnover and loss of wonderful, you know, restaurants and just kind of killing the Hill. And it's true that it's probably part of some of those restrictions, some of the ways that it's played out, and it's hard to measure, has probably contributed to their, you know, being a bit less rioting and couch burning and other behaviors, which I remember well. You know, so I have empathy for both sides, and I think that's kind of the hard thing. I think one thing that really stood out to me was kind of that differentiation between something that is fully functioning as a bar or really is turning into a bar after some certain time of night and a place that is food plus alcohol, you know, and also the unfairness of the fact that there are legacy uses that you know, can sell alcohol. And then somebody right next door who's basically being driven out of business from day one. So I'm not sure that I have a perfect solution. I think my instincts that I don't think is covered here, but I'm just gonna bring it forward and then and then stop talking. But my instinct would be that the issue is probably more around really strict code enforcement and like being super on top of it. And I'm not saying that in terms of like stretching the staff that we already have for coenforcement or like trying to push that back on the city staff. I would actually support, you know, and this would need to be developed, I think, in concert with the businesses, but some kind of an additional use fee, which I've also seen brought forward, for example, for residential landlords on the Hill, you know, that like you will pay into this fund this much. And like, we're gonna come through and clean up the alleys and we're gonna come through and pick up all the trash and like you're just gonna pay into a fund and that's how it's gonna work. Anyway, so yeah, I think I'm not necessarily opposed to trying lifting it and seeing if some of the other wraparound things that were put in place are enough to hold the line. But I think we have to be cognizant of the fact that we may be moving backward quickly. And I would also be super supportive of, you know, maybe outside this process, finding a way to specifically fund code enforcement officer activation intervention teams, whatever on the Hill, so that if we do this, we can do it successfully and not just be having to roll it back, you know, in six months or a year or whatever.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. If folks don't mind, I'm gonna just put on the table what my thought was about this because it's something around which we might be able to discuss. So my concern with the with the streamlining specifically to the BMS zone that's in the University General Improvement District is that there really wasn't any in-depth public engagement. And it emerged apparently from a conversation about that parking lot at 14th Street. And what emerged from the businesses were these concerns. And that there hasn't actually been the kind of in-depth public engagement or evaluation of proposed changes. And so what I'm thinking about, and maybe folks can respond to this, is in the case of 8590 is to remove the proposed amendments specifically to the BMS district in UJID. And recommending to council that they put this particular issue on their work plan for next year so that there can be an in-depth process that can maybe come out with a balance that work that doesn't end up rolling back something that took a long time to create. But also doesn't but creates a platform or a table where this stuff can be worked out because it does sound like there's competing concerns that just haven't been, the last time they were addressed was 2013, and they really weren't addressed in this discussion. It just sort of got added into the effort to streamline. So that I I'm gonna probably put an amendment on the table, but it'd be helpful if folks could respond to that on this particular issue. Laura.
Thank you for that, Sarah, and and also George and Lisa for your very well-considered comments, which I agreed with. So Sarah, what you have just proposed brings up a question for me, which is related to my earlier confusion about, you know, the presentation that went to city council was specifically around University Hill revitalization and UJID and some very specific proposals around that. And I'm not sure how that has been wrapped into this use table update. And or if there is some other venue where those specific decisions around UJID are going to be made. If we don't, if we punt here and say, we're not going to make that change here tonight, is there some other process that is thinking about public outreach and how to consider those changes? So I guess that's the question for Lisa Hood.
And Brad.
Yeah, thanks, Laura. And yeah, I might defer to Brad, and I also see that Chris Jones is on here too. So the Planning Board Packet with the ordinance was actually made public and sent to you before that study session with Community Vitality last week. So the ordinance changes are a result of the direction that we got from city council on July 27th at their study session, not necessarily related to the Community Vitality Study Session, which has happened in terms of timing to be similar within a few weeks. Brad, did you have anything?
No, actually, since I didn't realize Chris was here, so I would defer to him, other than to just tee up that the Community Vitality was really kind of a broad look with no determined timelines. So I'll pass it off at that point.
Good evening, Planning Board. Chris Jones here, Director of Community Vitality. We also have Regan Brown on the call. She's our Senior Project Manager in Community Vitality. We are a key liaison to the business community that we represent in all of our general improvement districts. And so, yes, last week, we brought to council a number of challenges that we're experiencing in the business community, including the alcohol-related regulations and some other regulations that are not being considered tonight for land uses in University Hill District. So council did express a strong desire to proceed with changes. There was certainly not unanimous desire to proceed with the changes that you all are considering tonight. But certainly a majority to move forward with changes quickly. So the suggestion that we put this on a future council's work plan might not be consistent with the direction that we received from a majority of council last week. But it doesn't mean that you can't still make a recommendation to the current council to that end.
Chris with a question. I'm sorry, Laura, just Chris, in your in your work on this particular tiny little slice of the business issues, what kind of public neighborhood engagement did you actually do specifically on this particular issue?
We did not ask council about specifically changing the regulations. All we asked council about last week was if they would like for staff to, would they like to direct staff to add a work plan item to consider changes for University Hill? So staff was contemplating that level of work in the question that we asked council last week. Their response back to us was more pointed in that they would like to see the changes on a faster time track. That doesn't mean that we, so that doesn't mean that we need to or have to. That was a direction we received at a study session based on presenting a number of of challenges that are being considered. We did not ask council to provide direction specifically on the changes that you're all considering this evening. So there has been no extensive community engagement. That takes a lot longer than what what was suggested by council members last week.
So to follow up on Laura's question, is there a is there a space, a platform for further discussion? The answer is actually, yes, there is. There's the work you're doing.
Actually, we do rely on our friends in planning to pursue these types of land use changes with you all. The question is whether or not we are going to queue up a longer term work plan item or something that is going to happen more administratively through our regular public hearing processes using relying on our ordinance and city code required public engagement processes to include additional input into the decisions around this particular topic. When the purpose of this work is to trying to simplify some of our regulations around community neighborhood serving commercial districts.
Okay, appreciate that. Laura, did you want to pick up from here?
I think I do, and and I apologize. I'm a little sleepier tonight than normal, so I'm not I'm not processing as quickly, but it does feel to me like what I heard from Community Vitality with that session that was specifically focused on University Hill questions felt like kind of the opening of a conversation, and it feels like we're now trying to shut it quite quickly by putting it into this use tables update. And Lisa, I hear you saying that this idea of removing the requirement around 50% of of sales have to be from food in all restaurants, not not just on the Hill, right? Am I hearing? No, wait. What am I misunderstanding?
That the 50% requirement only applies on the Hill.
It only applied on the Hill, right? And so removing it so that the Hill is the equivalent of other restaurants. That felt like a small and not a big focus area, it sounds like, for this use tables. Like, it wasn't even part of your presentation to really talk about it all that much. But it feels like it has become kind of a community flashpoint specifically for University Hill, and it feels like kind of, I don't know, public engagement is what I do for a living, and it feels like to sort of roll past that very quickly with this use tables update is is not quite sitting well with me tonight. So I think I probably would be in favor of and I can be convinced otherwise through more discussion if people think I'm on the wrong track, but it feels like that might be something that we want to remove from this decision tonight and recommend to council that more work be done through Community Vitality and some additional processes rather than having that be something that happens so suddenly. And if I'm misunderstanding something, please somebody jump in.
All right, Laura, thank you. So folks know, I sent a draft amendment to a motion we haven't even made yet, so if we can discuss. Who else would like to, let's keep going around the horn, and it can be about this subject or other topics that are of concern that so I'm gonna go just pick on you, Kurt, and go to you, even though you don't have your hand up.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, the the question of what to do on UniHill is certainly the most challenging part of this for me, because I think that there are good arguments on both sides. Also, I think it's true that whatever we do with the use table and standards is not going to fix all the problems on the Hill, obviously, right? And so it's a matter of how do we find the balance between what is best for the the people who live there and what is best for the people, the the business owners and the general vitality of the business district on the Hill? I think in the end, my inclination would be to go ahead with the the proposed changes in hopes that this could be a trial period. And we could see if that would make things better. It seems like we sort of had a trial period for 10 years. And it's not clear to me that that really made things better. I guess it changed some things. But I think that trying the the proposed changes for hopefully a shorter period of time would make sense i- if we could come back to them and and pivot quickly if that were, if that were called for. So that would be my inclination, but I'm certainly interested to hear other people's perspectives on these things. I have two other proposed changes that I would like to discuss, and I can go into more detail later. One would be to remove drive-through uses from the BC1 and BC BC1, BC2, and BCS zone districts. And also prohibiting detached dwelling units in the MU, BT, and VC zones.
You want to prohibit prohibiting?
Those are things that I am going to propose as amendments to this process.
Okay, I just want to make, I'm writing notes so that I know what to circle back to. So it's remove drive-through in BC1 and BT. Is that what you said?
No, BC1 and BC2 and BCS.
Okay, and then the other was?
Removing detached dwelling units as an allowed use in MU, BT, and VC zones.
Okay. All right, thank you. Lisa, I'm gonna come to you, ML and Mark, but Lisa has her hand up, and I'm gonna guess it's about the Hill. Is that a fair assumption? Okay, back to you, Lisa.
Yeah, no, I'm excited to see the language of what you're bringing forward, Sarah, and I guess I'll just say three things, and I don't want to belabor it so we can move along. But one is that I potentially be open to some kind of and, you know, an amendment or change specifically around the Hill, for all the reasons others have brought forward, including myself. I'm also actually somewhat sympathetic to what Kurt just said. I think the one thing that's holding me back from that, kind of like, okay, let's just do a trial and like, see how it goes. Or not holding me back. The one thing that makes me like hesitant to maybe be a little more aligned with the other side is just like, this is literally like a life and public safety issue, like they used to die a lot more up there. And it's awful, and it's sad, and these are kids. And and so I don't know that council will listen to your recommendation if that's where we end up landing as a board, but I kind of do feel like I'm leaning more towards sending a message of like, hey, you need to run like a better process and figure out how, if you do lift this, how you're gonna do it in a way where it's more likely to be successful. It just feels like a really high stakes trial period or, you know, pilot compared to some of the other things we do. So I just wanted to mention that, and then I'll I'll be quiet.
Thank you, Laura. ML, any issues that you're gonna want to bring up?
Thank you, Sarah. You know, the the piece, and I don't see Lisa anywhere, there you are, Lisa. The piece that has caught my attention in this whole process is the continued desire from residents at at the Neighborhood Center conversation about small businesses. And the question I have around that, maybe there's a simple answer is how does that get? I I heard the logic of going from the 1,000 to 1,500 square foot to 4,000. That that 4,000 seems to be the kind of the breaking point where you're not going to get any big boxes coming in at that or any any big restaurants coming in at that, chains coming in at that smaller scale. But where else in the use code do we have those kinds, the kinds of edges that preclude anything but small businesses? It seems that the ability to call something community or local or whatever is kind of fuzzy. And unless that there are some specifics, we could end up gentrifying so many of our neighborhood centers without. So is it, is it in the max, in the maximum square footage? Is that where the use code addresses that? Or are there any other means to? That's just such a recurring desire. And it seems, I know we're dealing with bigger projects that are in the industrial zones and those kinds of places where we're losing the small. And I don't think we want I want to find out how how we are precluding that from happening at the Neighborhood Center scale, which is part of this news review.
Sure. So throughout the use standards, we have a number of different uses that have either Sure. Um, so throughout the use standards, we have a number of different uses that have either or some sort of maximum size limit. So we actually do that quite frequently throughout the use standards. Other uses like offices, personal, not personal services, but like indoor athletic facilities are some that come to mind. We have a number of other uses where we have it's allowed by right up to a certain size beyond that it's user viewer conditional use. There's probably dozens of uses that have something like that. So it's not uncommon for us to use square footage as kind of the differentiating factor between the type of review process. And I think for a lot of those, that is trying to keep a neighborhood scale. We've had some challenges, like you said, with some more ambiguous, not ambiguous, but kind of that fuzzy language, like our definition of personal services for a long time has said for the convenience of the neighborhood, that the use is for the convenience of the neighborhood. And that we actually led to a code change where we came up with specific size limits for indoor athletic facilities, which are were used to be classified as personal services. But we were running into at what point does is the gym for the convenience of the neighborhood versus that? So we do use the square footage and the maximum size as a fairly you know, black and white determining factor between what the impact is or what the draw is to that business throughout many different businesses in the in the use standards. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I'm thinking about that project that came through that was behind Basemar Center, a part of the zoning, the Basemar Center. And it was I think student housing was being proposed there and the removal of all those little shops. And it seems like there wasn't anything that we could really point to in the use code or in the zoning that would stop that kind of I don't know, evolution, but that kind of shift from what seems to be the spirit of of neighborhood centers. To me, that that's a glary one because it was just so not anything that the neighbors were rec or we were recognizing as, oh, how is this a neighborhood center? Part of a neighborhood center, so it might be a bigger question than than a specific. That's what concerns me. That we get embedded in the use codes because again and again, we see the public input. And it comes down to, we want small, we want local, we want to feel like we can embrace and support our community in these walkable neighborhood areas. And yet the opportunity for a development that doesn't include that desire can also happen. So I'm I it's almost like right now, we're talking about, you know, the closing time, make it across the board or the serving of food, making it across the board in all the restaurants. It would seem as though neighborhood centers should have across the board some particulars that are gonna preclude the overriding of the desire for intimacy in their shopping centers, especially at that neighborhood scale. This is not the regional commercial center. These are something that is personal. And it seems like it can be overrun. And I don't know how to get anyway, it's a question. That's what comes up for me in the, you know, I think the uni the uni hill question, I I agree with what people are saying. Both sides are right and it's been stuck. The problem isn't solved. I love the idea of a pilot. And maybe it be emerging of a pilot with what Lisa's proposing, a pilot with that not only includes changing the regulations, but providing for the structured aftermath later openings and perhaps more impacts to the, you know, trash and unruin us and that sort of thing. So maybe it's a combination of of those two two things, but anyway, nothing, nothing any more specific than that. Again, my concern is I I keep hearing we want to stay local and I hope that we can codify that.
Can I just respond? ML or what Lisa, if I'm not mistaken, during the first the first round of of the use review, when we went line through line, we actually decreased the minimum plate. Did we not for stores in the BC one and two zones? I think we reduced it to like fifteen hundred as a minimum. Is that, am I remembering that correctly?
It's not ringing any bells for me. I don't know.
Maybe we just discussed it and then didn't do.
Yeah, it could have. Yeah. I don't remember seeing that as a code change, but that was before I started at the city, so I'm not sure.
Okay, is is Carl?
Carl, Carl's not here.
The the person who knows everything, Charles is here.
I remember. It was as as you recall, Sarah, we discussed it, but it wasn't anything that made it into the ordinance.
Okay.
So, um, Charles, your perspective on, um, how does this concern that shows up when we look at these public outreach that talks about we want local, we want small, we want our neighborhood centers to be intimate. In in your estimation, how does the use table assure that? Is that, where does that land? Is it too, is that too restrictive to think that way that we want it local?
You're muted, Charles. Charles, you're muted.
I don't know that I understand your question, ML, so maybe if you can rephrase it.
Well, I think Sarah was talking about.
Can I call we and ask you a question?
Sure.
And maybe I need to see the map of neighborhood centers again, but are the neighborhood centers generally exclusively small businesses? Or do they have things like a Safeway and a Whole Foods?
They have a variety of business types.
Yeah, so that that was my impression too, is that there there are anchor stores and sometimes there are chain stores, but we don't want it to be exclusively that, you know, we don't want it to look like strip mall America. I'm from the East Coast where you can drive through four different towns and you would never know you were someplace different because they all look the same and they all have the same stores and the same restaurants. So I get that desire for local character, local flavor. It shouldn't all be Whole Foods and Safeways, but but there is some of that, I think, in the neighborhood centers. So ML, are you asking, is there something in the code that prohibits that or that makes sure that everything is small and everything is not a chain?
What I'm asking is so just big picture, the public input seems to continuously to point to we want local. I mean, that seems to show up in so many of the different public input that that you present us. And I'm wondering is how does where in the use codes is that safeguarded in some way? And and I'm not, Laura, to speak to your question, I I don't think that it's a an exclusive, but maybe there's, is there a percentage or is there a way, is there a a way has this conversation on how to codify that desire on the public's part? Let's not gentrify our city. Let's not make it generic. Let's let's try to create a place for our local stuff to happen. Has that filter? Maybe it's a filter that gets developed so that when the uses in a particular area are being reviewed or programmed, it's a consideration. As opposed to, oh, you can have, we can have all of these. So we could have all big boxes, we could have. What precludes that sort of thing from happening? Even that's not what people want.
I think I have a I have a better question this time, a better answer to your question this time. So that is really what we've tried to do with these changes. We've really tried to incentivize the small business by setting size limits, whether it's four thousand for restaurants, five thousand for retail or some of the other size limits. I think we did two thousand for convenience retail. Really trying to incentivize small and maybe by proxy local, those small businesses, because their process would be allowed by right. They'd get to go straight to a building permit. They wouldn't have to go through a user viewer conditional use. But once it's a larger use, which might be less of that kind of neighborhood feel that you're speaking to, then they have to go through a user view. And so the user view is a longer process. It's more discretionary. It's less certain than allowed by right. So in that way, we're trying to incentivize the small local businesses by providing them with the the smoother path, easier path to approval. And then those larger businesses get more scrutiny.
Yeah, especially for businesses that we know that have a lot more impacts. That's really what user view was set up to do is to help manage impacts that might be a detriment to a neighborhood or other surrounding businesses. So but I think ML, excuse me, I think to more directly respond to your question, there's nothing that we're crafting right now that guarantees that all of these businesses will be local. You know, to Lisa's point, we hope that some of the size restrictions that, you know, we're putting up might help encourage different business technologies, but just to be very explicit, there's nothing that we're drafting in this that would.
Right. I I like that answer, though, Lisa, and thank you for that. I think that answers my question that it's in the use by right. If the kinds of 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 business demographics, if you will, that people are wanting can become used by rights, then I think that is a clear as Charles, an incentive for those kinds of things to happen because it's expensive to go to review processes. So I guess I have to look at a fine with a fine tooth comb to make sure that those use by rights are at the thresholds. You know, that will meet what we hear people saying that they that they want. Is it illegal, Hella?
Yes, well, we're discussing, but I was gonna mention that there is a constitutional concept called the dormant commerce clause. And that actually prohibits the city from taking making regulatory measures that benefit in state interests over out of state interests. And it also applies if you benefit a local, more local interest because that automatically also burden the out of state interests. So we can regulate based on.
Wait, did you say it was literally literally the interstate commerce clause?
Yeah, it's called the dorm. It's a dormant commerce clause concept.
Okay, okay.
Hella, are you, is that a federal or is that state?
Federal.
Yeah, so so there are, I mean, just just for everyone's awareness, that there 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 are areas of the country that have tried chain store bans with success. So I don't know how that conflicts with what Hella just said. But I I know San Francisco has done it in certain zones. Places like Fairfax, California have done it. So there is, there is a mechanism to do it. I don't think it has, it's related to what we're talking about tonight. But but there there are, there are communities, and I'm not saying it's it's necessarily successful because I think it brings on all kinds of other nuanced issues that those communities are dealing with. But if that's something ML that you're interested in pursuing or others are interested in pursuing, that there are cases of other cities doing stuff like that. And I think it's really interesting. I think like a lot of things like that, it also brings unintended consequences. Because, you know, as for instance, things like franchises and other things, which are both local and small businesses and large businesses overlaid over those things. You know, you end up and and equity issues and there there are all kinds of things around that stuff, but I don't think it's related to what we're doing today, but I I'm very interested in that. But I also think it's a it's a whole other can of worms. But but as far as what Hella is saying, I do think there are communities that have done stuff like this to varying levels of success that you know, if that's something that the that we or the community wants to look into, there there's there's opportunity to do that.
What you're talking about is more regulating big spot, big box stores versus having a regulation that says only local businesses locate here.
Right, right.
Uh, thank you, George, and thank you, ML. So Kurt and Laura have their hands up, but are you all wanting to respond to ML or bring up another topic? Because Mark hasn't had his chance to raise his issues yet, so I don't just want to figure out. You want to respond to ML. Okay, and Kurt, do you also want to respond to ML? Okay, Laura, you go first, then Kurt, and then I promise you, Mark, we're coming to you next.
Thank you for organizing us, Sarah. I just want to say really quickly, and I agree with Georgia, tonight is not the night to hash this out, but when we were doing the East Boulder Subcommunity Plan, a lot of these ideas were talked about as well. And one thing to be sensitive to is that local business owners, they they fear like, am I not allowed to grow? Am I not allowed to have a second restaurant? Like if I'm Black Belly and I am very successful and I want to invest my capital in either making my business larger or in having a second or a third restaurant. Those are the kinds of businesses that people think of as small local businesses. But regulations can have that unintended consequence that George was talking about of making it impossible to grow or to branch out. So I'll just I'll just stop there.
Thank you, Laura. Kurt?
And I just wanted to point out that we certainly do hear that people want local businesses. I think we all want local businesses. But we also hear that we want affordability, we want choice. We heard that particularly from the community connectors that they want affordable housing, shopping options. And those unfortunately are often intentioned. And so it's not just a goal of local businesses, it's a complex goal. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Um, Mark, your turn.
Thanks. I I have several comments relating to the issue at hand, but I I will take a second to address ML and simply say that, you know, the US Constitution, we are known for being a nation that operates under the rule of law, not of men. And so under that general provision, we are not allowed to discriminate in ways that whether it be through interstate commerce clause or in my next comments regarding the hill are going to be about discrimination based on age. We have prior our occupancy ordinance based on familial status. And so we are not allowed to craft a code that says we don't like you. You are too techie. You have, you have more than three stores, hence you're you're not allowed. You have more than two restaurants, hence you're not allowed. That is not allowed under United States federal constitutional law, and that's a good thing. And so it's incumbent upon us as a planning board and a planning department to craft code that incentivizes and encourages behavior, good behavior. Gee, the growth of small businesses, the expansion of small businesses, businesses that are responsive to community needs, but it is not. We are not setting up a panel that would allow ad hoc discrimination based on some various gray area of of a rule. So anyway, I am, I want us to 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 focus on code that is specific and encourages good behavior, good businesses from our citizenry and our business community, but we can't, we can't just say, gee, I like it the way it is or the way it was. Hence, I'm going to, I'm for this or against that. So that's my little speech on that. In regard to the the ordinance that we're discussing, I I first thing I want to say is, uh, thanks to staff. I have yet to see a an ordinance discussion that begins with a slide that's animated that conveys the duration of the of the project. And so here we have a uh, an ordinance project that expands spans so many years that we get an animated slot. I also, uh, you know, want to thank Sarah and ML and staff for their work on this because I think it's good work. And I think that the community engagement over this period of time can't be denigrated or diminished. Now, it it may not have been as focused as some might like on the hill. But we have done, I think we have done exemplary work engaging the community and I thank staff and our board members for that. And so I think. Um, and uh, so I think the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan uh, encourages and wants to reward and wants to support good uh, neighborhood centers. So I am in support of this because I think that overall the ordinance supports the enhancement, the growth of neighborhood centers. I'm, uh, as I went through it, I can say I'm disappointed that maybe it's beyond the scope of the project that we actually don't really talk about ways of creating new neighborhood centers versus enhancing existing ones. Um, and the last thing I want to say in relation to the Hill, and this is another uh, case, and it goes back to my comments, uh, directly to ML, but uh, goes back to occupancy. That discriminatory code that tries to control behavior by discriminating based on age, based on familial status, based on wealth, based on homeownership is is not only wrong, it's it's not very effective. It doesn't work very well. And um, and so the current status of discriminating against certain Hill businesses because of bad behaviors of some people i- is 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 negatively affecting those businesses. And it's not really uh, it's not really controlling the bad behavior. So uh, once again, uh, Boulder, as a city, we tend to obtusely uh, try to attack our problems. And and simple code enforcement is is a superior way. Uh, you know, uh, not over serving, enforcing underage drinking uh, allowances, et cetera. All these things can can be enforced with our current code. And when we, when we uh, nickel and dime and parse our code in such ways that uh, this business operates under one set of rules and the business next door operates under a different set of rules. That breeds contempt for local government and it is not effective. So I am all for our code simplification and uh, and the unification of restaurant code. And I'm all for uh, both understanding, sympathizing, and most importantly, enforcing our codes universally on the Hill, downtown, uh, wherever they may be, and and achieving our behavioral goals through code enforcement. So uh, I am, I will be opposed uh, to any measure to separate the Hill from other business districts in our um, uh, in our discussions tonight. That's it.
All right. Thank you very much. Um, so I have one more issue that I'm gonna just put on the table, but I'm gonna end up proposing it as a separate motion. Um, so I think I Kurt, if I've heard Kurt correctly, I think we may be on a similar page. Um, the the um, I I'd like to make, I'm gonna make a motion to recommend that council include in its work plans for next year. Uh, that staff go back and look again at the prohibition of uh, ground floors, uh, duplexes and townhomes in B C zones. Um, it's not a requirement, it's a recommendation, uh, so that, uh, because when that was originally, that was part of phase one of this uh, process. And I I do remember that we talked quite a bit at the time about including town. We wanted the neighborhood centers to be diverse housing stock. Um, and um, uh, apparently that was not included in the changes that were made back in twenty nineteen. But here we are five years later, and there's been a lot of discussion about trying to create missing middle housing. And um, those are housing types that we know, um, middle income and in commuters are interested in. Um, and so anyways, I'm gonna make a proposal as a second separate motion uh, just to encourage uh, city council to look at that next year. Okay, so um, and we can discuss that when we get to it. Um, so what I'd like to do now is um, bring up the suggested motion language. Uh, and then we can begin to explore the amendments that are being proposed. I know Kurt has already sent his proposed amendments into uh, Devin and I have set mine in. So I'll go ahead and make a ma- make the motion. And we'll get it seconded and then we'll start with amendment. So um, uh, planning, our suggested motion language. Planning Board recommends that City Council adopt ordinance five eight five nine zero, amending Title Nine Land Use Code to update the use table and use standards related to walkable neighborhood centers. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Kurt. Okay, so uh, what I, how about if we, let's bring up the um, uh, let's bring up the Hill, uh, my my amendment first. I think the one that's probably most debatable, um, has the most debate around it, and then we can discuss and vote on it, yea or nay, or make um, so uh, where is Devin? Devin, can you put on the screen the language that I sent you? Okay. All right, so, yes, Hella.
Yeah, Sarah, I I was just gonna suggest that you could make the initial motion. Um, the motion that recommends approval of the ordinance with the with the change that you're gonna propose. And just put that out there to start with.
All right, so what, do I need to remake the motion or just make the make a propose an amendment to the motion?
Um, I I guess you can do your own friendly amendment. If Kurt is gonna accept it.
I would, I would suggest, sorry, I I would suggest that we just amend, discuss a separate amendment to add Sarah's or separate amendments to add mine and so on. To start with the the plain.
Okay, so we've already, we've already seconded the motion, the initial motion. So now uh, we're, it's open for discussion. Uh, and if I'm doing this correctly, I'm going to propose an amendment to the motion. All right, so my proposed amendment uh, is, and I will read it. Uh, an amendment that would remove any proposed amendments to the current specific use standards for the B M S district that apply to restaurants, brew pubs, and taverns that are located in UGID. And recommend to council to include in its work plan priorities for the next year. The uh, the intention to, sorry, I'm not sure why, with the intention to review, evaluate, and potentially develop changes to the specific use standards for the B M S district that uh, that applies to restaurants, brew pubs, and taverns within UGID. This process should solely focus on the specific use standards for this area and should include a robust public process. And obviously, there's gonna have to be some changes made to the Jerrons in this, to get it correct. Yes, Laura?
Can I ask you a question, Sarah?
Yeah.
So the the basic changes that are being proposed for all restaurants is increasing the buy right size to four thousand feet. Setting the hour of closing at eleven, and then some standardization of what can be in an outdoor pad. Like what are the restrictions on outdoor patios so that it's not dependent on size? But it's basically like all the stuff that we would do in a user view, like amplified noise and and all of that kind of stuff. You don't want any of that for the UGID neighborhood, or is it just this alcohol provision, this fifty percent of sales?
What? This is a land use question, not a percentage of sales question. So uh, what I, the the proposal that is in front of us uh, has eliminated the existing, proposes to eliminate the existing code at nine dash six dash five E seven B. That relates solely the B M S zone in UGID. And instead, to move the B M S in UGID into nine dash six dash five E five A along with all these other zones. Um, and what that, what I'm concerned that it will do is uh, potentially roll back what were hard fought, hard fought over guardrails. Uh, without actually doing any public engagement or examination of the impact of rolling it back. So I'm if a year from now, a public process gets us right back to where we are today, okay. What I'm concerned about, um, as you were, is that there hasn't actually been a public process on this particular change, but it could have potentially very maybe it'll have very positive implications, or maybe it will have very negative implications. And we just haven't done the kind of engagement on this that's needed. So the language that I'm proposing, which Hella helped me with um, is intended solely to put aside uh, the one particular change of moving B M S in UGID into a different section of the code.
Can you, can you cite those code sections again? Because I'm, this is way beyond what I prepared for. And so I want to know what, if I approve, if I vote for this, what I'm voting for. So can you cite this?
What what's being proposed here is that the eliminate, the the current proposed plan eliminates nine dash six dash five E seven B, which are the current code, the current regulations that apply to B M S in UGID, just that one small area. That's what is being proposed. And I'm proposing that that not be eliminated. And instead, we recommend to council that they take this up as an issue next year. Just looking at that one area and doing in-depth analysis and public engagement rather than what they've done he- here, which is some city council people said, I think we we've talked to some bar owners or restaurant owners, and we think this should happen. But there was literally no public engagement on this, none. And if you look at the history of how we got to where we are in terms of what exists in terms of regulation, it was because there was, there were so many significant problems on the Hill. Um, and maybe the bar, the restaurant owners who've spoken to us tonight, maybe their analysis of the problems on the Hill are correct, but it's not based on any actual analysis. It's anymore, I mean, there, the city hasn't done the work on this one particular slice of of um, code. So um, my proposal is not that we never come back to it, but rather we propose to council that next year this be on their work plan. And as we heard from Chris, this issue, there's a platform, a space, a table for this to be, to be engaged in in a more uh, in-depth way, which is the economic vitality process.
Yeah, I I think I understand the point that you're making, Sarah, and I'm probably sympathetic to it. I'm just wondering if some of the changes that are being generally proposed, like the four thousand square foot by right limit of size and the eleven P M closing time and the outdoor patio standards, which seem generally not controversial, could go ahead and apply to UGID, but we exempted out the things that are controversial like this section that says not less than fifty percent of the gross income of sales from food and drink of the establishment, et cetera, et cetera. Like that they have to sell fifty percent food along with their alcohol. That seems to be that along with hours of operation seem to be the two big sticking points. But this particular code change would not extend the hours of operation by right to two A M. They still would have to get a use review for that. So it seems to me like the big sticking point is this alcohol provision. But maybe there's other stuff in this section that you cited that we haven't talked about, um, that's also important. So.
Madam Chair.
Uh, I'm sorry, I'm not quite done yet. Mark.
Well, I, Madam Chair, point of order. You have made a motion, and it's being discussed and debated, and it has not been seconded. This is all for naught. If we don't get a second and actually follow the procedure. So my question is, do you have a second?
Well, I think the discussion that we're having might lead to something that could get a second if I don't have a second for what's proposed here. So.
So if you don't have a second, then the next move would be to make an amendment that would receive a second.
Okay, do I have a second? Thank you so much, Mark. I really appreciate you helping.
Good, I'm glad you appreciate.
So much. Thank you, Mark.
Sure, sure, I'll I'll second so we can have a conversation.
Thank you, George.
Thank you.
Okay, so uh, Kurt.
So I think Laura's questions are good. The way I read this, if we were to to undo the deletion of this section review process within UGID, then the other changes that we're talking about, changing the base uh, size, the the hours, the patio stuff, that would still apply. And then there are these additional provisions within UGID, meaning with surrounding property owners required management plan, size of establishment, four thousand square feet. Well, that's already given hours of appu- of operation and so on. So Joe, I'm 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 trying to answer my under, my understanding of the answer to Laura's question is the the base standards would be changed, and then these additional rules would apply in UGID. If Sarah's man were approved.
So in UGID, if you go to page fifty seven on, and it'd be helpful, you see you're there. Thank you. Um, if you go to page fifty seven, uh, the code specific to UGID conditional use, B M S district, restaurants, brew pubs, taverns, you know, but located within Uni Hill. General Improvement District may be approved only as a conditional use provided they meet the following standards. Uh, good neighbor meeting, sorry, I'm just going through this. Uh, size of establishment shall not exceed four thousand square feet. So that's already uh, allowed. I mean, that's, that is, uh, the four thousand feet is the max that's proposed for the Hill, for all of everything in uh, nine dash six dash five E five A, which is where this would be moved to. Uh, hours of operation, uh, no later than eleven unless the establishment operated without a liquor license, which I think is a big issue. Outdoor seating area shall cease no later than eleven P M. I don't know whether that's the same code for uh, nine dash six dash five E. Lisa, is it the same?
Uh, yeah, sorry, uh, to, so to clarify a couple of things. So the way that the ordinance is drafted now, it would consolidate, it would eliminate um, the current standards for the UGID area in B M S. Take everything in B M S and consolidate it with the changes that we're recommending for those other districts. So some of the things that are unique about UGID right now, the University Hill District, is that the only review process is a conditional use. There is no use review option beyond that. So if you're over four thousand square feet, if you operate past eleven with a liquor license, there's no option to get a use review. So in the proposed ordinance, there is an option for larger and open later restaurants to pursue a use review, and that's one of the main changes or one of the main differences. Um, there also are those additional standards related to food and snacks that would not be covered in that consolidated standards. Um, in the proposed ordinance, how we've moved that. So I think, Sarah, how I understand your motion is kind of keep it as it is. The UGID part, you know, don't move any part of it, but still make the changes for the other districts that are proposed with the four thousand and everything. Um, but take a closer look at the the UGID changes as a whole, as a separate project. Um, but I do think there, to Laura's point, I do think there's also a middle option, or there are several middle options where you could take some of the ideas that are contemplated in those consolidated standards and add some flexibility into the University Hill area without touching some of the food things. So as always, it's complex.
Yeah, so I don't think that we're, we have the expertise to draft new use review language that reflects that flex, that that complexity. Uh, which is why what I'm recommending or what I'm proposing is uh, to leave it as is so that the city can undertake a cr- a a robust process that can in a year's time produce changes that are appropriate, rather than changes that are kind of they kind of snuck in here um, as part of a streamlining process without necessarily having the robust public engagement that might, might produce the same exact outcome, but we don't know that. Um, so, you know, maybe the language here is too complex. What I had originally proposed was a recommendation to council to direct staff to undertake a revo- robust robust public process that specifically and solely focuses on restaurant, brew pub, and tavern use standards in UGID to develop a way to move forward that finds the right balance for all involved. That was my original language, um, which I think is pretty simple. And uh, is intended solely to set this one item aside so that the city so that the city can go through a more legitimate process. So, so we could, we could vote on the amendment that's here and then I, and which I think is going to go down. And I can then propose a second, a second version, which is much simpler and doesn't put us in the position of trying to draft a use review language that we are not, is not our, really our, our task, our task is to send recommendations to council. Okay, so let's vote on the amendment that's here. And then if it goes down, which I think it will, then I can make a second, a second version. So, Mark.
No.
Kurt.
No.
Laura.
Could you come back to me, please?
Okay, and there I am going to make a much simpler second proposal. George.
Uh, no, because I, I think it's, it's worth, it's worth refining.
Okay, ML.
No.
Lisa.
I'll vote no. I'm curious to see the next one.
Okay, and Laura?
No.
Okay, and I will vote yes, but then I will just bring in this new language. Hold on one second. All right, I'm just going to send it to, oops. Sorry about this, guys.
While that's happening, I'm going to bring up some prior to everyone on the boards, planning board history and just say that Sarah spent, I'm not sure if it was a year or two years alongside other previous planning board members, working very thoroughly with Carl Guiler and other members of city staff, if I remember correctly, on the land use table and just going over everything with a fine tooth comb. And I was, I got to sit in and learn on some of those sessions and just kind of hear how careful that work was and also how careful everybody was not to impose their personal beliefs as they tried to move through the process. And it was very cool. It was a very cool little, little work process. And Sarah, thank you for doing it.
Well, thank you. Kurt sat in on a lot of those as well.
And I just want to chime in and say that when the city council discussed this use tables model, module three back in July, they specifically complimented the planning board liaisons and work group on the work that you did. And so if you didn't listen to that, I want to pass along their comments.
Thank you. And thanks to ML, who's part of cycle two and three, phase two and three. Okay, so I sent much simpler language, which may still get rejected. So I will read it. I won't make the motion, but I'll read it. Amendment to recommend to council that, that council directs staff to undertake a robust public process that specifically and solely focuses on restaurant group hub and tavern use standards in UGID to develop a way to move forward that finds the right balance for all involved. And then my guess is we'd have to add, we just would have to add a sentence that says, remove, have to add the, remove any, that was in the original one. And that starts with remove any proposed amendments to the current specific standards for the BMS district that apply to restaurants, brew pubs and taverns that are located in UGID.
Could you just cite the specific code section and say retains section nine dash six dash five E seven B?
Sure.
Is that what you're proposing is to retain that?
Yes, yes. So retain amendment, when are you, can you type? Whoa. An amendment to recommend to council to, to retain amendment to retain. Yeah, there it is. Amendment to retain. And yeah, okay. Nine dash six dash five small E, number seven, capital B, and to recommend, so then, and then the rest of the language, and to recommend to council to direct staff. Yeah. Okay, so that's much simpler, much more direct. I'm happy to make the amendment and see if there's a second.
I think you, you're still missing a word there, which is recommend to council to direct staff to undertake, just, just for clarity.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, so I'm making an amendment. Hopefully there'll be a second. An amendment to retain nine dash six dash five E seven B and to recommend to council to direct staff to undertake a robust public process that specifically and solely focuses on restaurant group hub and tavern use standards in UGID to develop a way to move forward that finds the right balance for all involved. Is there a second? No second?
I'll, I'll second that.
Okay.
I, I was going to suggest a friendly change, if that's okay.
Go, go ahead, Laura. Yeah.
Before you amend a second, I do think that simplifying the, the patio so that we don't get all these use reviews related to outdoor patios. Do you, Sarah and George, do you feel that that could apply to UGID and we could go ahead and do that? Or do you feel like that also needs more public input?
Wait, Lisa has her hand up. Lisa.
So Laura, sorry, I just want to clarify. So the patio size limit doesn't actually apply in UGID.
Oh, okay. So that one wouldn't, wouldn't make a difference to pet, to UGID anyway?
Right, not currently.
Okay, okay. Thank you. That's a helpful clarification, Lisa. Appreciate that.
Okay, so it's been seconded. Is there comment? Is there? No. George, you have a comment?
So, yeah, I'll make a comment in general, which is kind of consistent with my first statement. I, I, I truly believe where this probably should land is the unification of these things across the board. I, I love the idea of where Lisa was talking about some kind of fund for code enforcement, because that's what it might take in order to make sure that, that, that the community is heard and that something, that things are actually being actively enforced. And I think that's why this needs, you know, some more conversation, because this thing was, was a hard fought discussion item is it's not that I, I think that it should ultimately, I, 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 my gut is that it will probably land with unification, but a, but a, but a more detailed thought process around unleashing this on the hill again and making sure it's done in a, in a really thoughtful way without running over the community. But, so, so that's, that's my perspective on why, why I think we should do this is because this was put in with a lot of thought and care. It may not have been effective. I, I don't have a particular opinion on it beyond, I, I think it should actually be unified. But I, I want to make sure that the community is heard through, through this, through this process, like, like any other process, that we would, we would kind of invoke this kind of change. So that's, that's the reason why I second that.
Okay, thank you, George. Mark?
Yeah, I, I agree with George that unification is the answer. I think that we would be hard pressed to find residents of the hill that are happy with the results of the current code. And yes, 10, we've had the current code for 10 years. Yes, it was hard fought. And I think, yes, the results are in essence a failure. And that is why the residents of the hill continue to struggle. And that they struggle with essentially code enforcement. So we have a liquor licensing board. We have, we have a planning board whose job is to create fair and understandable and applicable land use codes and regulations that, that businesses can plan for. And, you know, one of the goals of this entire module three project is surety is, is allowing businesses to plan. So this whole talk about, well, let's pilot, let's, let's pilot that. Pilots, when you're talking about investing tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars into renovating a building, building a restaurant, producing a music venue, you know, don't do that under a pilot project with the idea that it might get revoked in six months or a year. So you know, the current thing isn't working and continued, continued application of the current code is, is simply not, not what I'm going to support. And I think that code enforcement is, and code enforcement through our liquor board and through our police and through our enhanced code enforcement of our code enforcement team is, is the answer to the problems directly versus this to attempt to regulate behavior.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Does anyone else want to comment? Laura?
Yeah, I will comment and I'll say, Mark, I think your comments are well taken about, you know, the answer may lie in enforcement. I think Lisa's idea of how to fund that was, was very attractive and that may be where we land. My sense is this is enough of a controversial issue within the neighborhood. And it was something that was carefully thought out years ago. And that for us just to take a red pen and strike through it without much community conversation does not to me feel like it will be a productive thing that will create community harmony and community accord and agreement. And it, you know, it may be that progress will catch up to the hill. And if we removed these restrictions, everybody would be happy with the result that that could happen. But I'm, I'm not sufficiently convinced that that is absolutely going to happen. I do think that probably people are going to want to sit down and go through these one by one and think about, does this still make sense in 2023 and, and beyond? And if we don't have this, is there something else that we need? So I, I do believe in community conversation, you know, you, you're never going to make everybody happy all the time. But something like this, I don't, I don't think that we should be sort of removing by fiat very, very quickly. That is the kind of thing that people tend not to love in their elected officials. And I do think it could have consequences. So I, I am going to support this amendment.
Thank you, Laura. Any other comments that people want to make? And if not, we will go to a vote. ML.
Thank you, Sarah. The only comment I was wondering about is would there be value in either including, I don't know how friendly amendment or an additional, the idea that, that Lisa put forward. And I think that, well, that's pretty much Lisa that to consider not just, so right, right here, you're saying specifically and solely focuses on restaurant use standards to develop a way to move forward. And I don't know if that create a mechanism to not only enforce, but to enhance the means of enforcing the regulations, I think, has been put on the table. And it seems that a lot of the problem lies in the lack of that. And I don't know if we want to reference that somehow in this so that that isn't lost. I think that's a valuable observation about where the problem might lie and how it might be solved.
ML, that's interesting. Can we circle back to that after Lisa and Laura speak? They both have their hands up. Lisa.
Yeah, I'd be open to it. I'm all just thought if people want to put that in. I also think that potentially, given that you talk about a robust public process, if this were to pass, I imagine that idea would come back up through that public process. So I, I'd be open either way, you know, calling it out specifically or keeping this more simple. And I also would just say that I will also indicate that I would support this as written.
Thank you, Lisa. Laura and then Kurt.
I think ML has raised a very good point about this language, because it currently says it solely focuses on use standards in UGID. And so I think adding the language focuses on use standards and code enforcement in UGID. Just adding that simple phrase and code enforcement, I think would be useful so that the charge is not solely limited to use, use standards.
Okay, I'm, that's a great addition. And I think that, ML, does that kind of address your, okay. All right, so I just need Hella to show up for a second. Given that it's been seconded, can we add a clause? Can we add that clause or that phrase?
I think the, the most proper way would be to do another amendment to add that, or you could do, consider it a friendly amendment and you as, you, you could accept it and ask if the person who seconded accepts it. And if nobody objects to that process, then that's a way to more simply do this.
Okay.
Process waiver that.
Okay, so before we do anything, Devin, can you just write in red? Use, after use standards, put in and code enforcement and do that in red so that we can come back to that as a friendly. Thank you.
I, I do like that as a friendly amendment, so I'm going to propose it as a friendly amendment that is clarifying something that Sarah, I think that you meant or were open to from the beginning. I don't think it changes your intent.
No, okay.
Yeah, I'm okay as the seconder of that to, to move that forward. That's what Sarah would accept.
Okay, thank you. So Kurt and then Lisa. And then we'll go to a vote. And hi, Max.
Sorry, if I was just called on and my hand was up, it's because it was just still up. So.
No, we're just saying hi to Max.
Okay. Okay. Kurt, he's being loud.
I, I certainly support the idea of a community conversation about this. I was supportive of the amendment before you added the language at the beginning, where we would have gone ahead with the change and then, and seen how that worked as we were doing the community conversation. I think as has been pointed out, people, the, the, the current situation is not actually working. And so trying something else to me would be appropriate while we're talking about it. So it's a difficult decision for me, but I'm not going to support this.
Okay. All right, so I just need to go back to Hella. The, George, as a seconder, accepted the change. Do I need to remake the, remake the motion or just read the emotion with the friendly included?
I think instead of the friendly amendment accepted, nobody objected to the process of adding it in this way, then I would recommend that you read the amendment, including the friendly amendment language.
Okay, George, did you have something you wanted to say first?
Well, I, I wanted, I wanted to just give a thought to Kurt, which is something that someone else brought up in, in my experience in commercial real estate, is I, I, I hear you and I actually think that's actually where it's going to land ultimately with, with more conversation with the community. That the, the issue with piloting, and I just want you to consider it relative to how you're thinking about it, is piloting with, 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 with real estate and then rolling, but let's say, let's say it doesn't go well and their conversation hasn't, and, and the conversation changes. And now six months or a year down the road, people's investments and, and what they're doing doesn't work, then they're really screwed. So that's why I don't think like a pilot in these kinds of scenarios works without some assurances that people are going to be able to have, to be able to continue with what they're doing. I don't, I don't know if that, I, I just like you to, to think that through. Because I, I don't know that that works in practicality. Because people are, are making big investments one way or the other. And, and I don't think we'll get any results with a, with a quote unquote pilot that can be reversed. So anyways, just, just a thought to put out there.
Kurt, do you want to respond or would you be okay if we go to the vote? And then maybe this is a conversation that you and George could have.
Oh, I just, can I just very quickly say, I really appreciate your wisdom. You have much more experience in this than I do. And what you said. And what you said really is consistent with what Mark was saying too. So I really appreciate that.
Okay, so um I'm going to reread the motion and then go to a vote. Amendment to retain nine dash six dash five E seven B and to recommend to council to direct staff to undertake a robust public process that specifically and solely focuses on restaurant group pub and tavern use standards and code enforcement in UGID to develop a way to move forward that finds the right balance for all involved. Kurt?
I'm gonna vote yes based on George's input.
Okay, thank you. George?
Yes.
Uh, Lisa?
Hi.
Mark?
No.
ML?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
And Sarah is a yes, this amendment passes six one or is approved six one. All right, thank you all. Now we're gonna go to Kurt's uh amendment. Is there, is there more than one Kurt?
There are two, they're very short.
Okay. And um wait, uh Devon, you just erased what was just approved. Did you mean to do that?
And and just as a clarification, it was approved to attach it to this motion. This motion has not yet passed. So if the motion fails, then the amendment also fails.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so uh Kurt Kurt's amendment, Kurt, do you wanna um make your amendment or propose your amendment?
Yes, I move uh the addition of language that uh would say that that would uh add to the the um the planning board recommendation uh a provision that would request that council also consider prohibiting drive-throughs in the BC zones.
So.
I I I was gonna take these one at a time, so.
Okay, that's fair. Can I just, can I just respond to before someone does seconds or doesn't second it? Just in terms of the history of the BC zone discussion, I remember that we actually talked about drive-ins. Um, and the where the conversation ended was that for some people, especially like young moms with kids who are running around doing errands, um, the ability to like drive into the bank, have a drive-in bank uh was very valuable because then they didn't have to deal with getting their kid out of the car and all that stuff. So what I'm thinking is maybe to clarify what type of drive-in you mean and maybe um narrow it a bit to some, is it like drive-ins? Restaurants, is it? Uh, anyways, and before you do anything, Lisa uh just raised her hand. And my guess is she's gonna tell us something.
Yeah, Sarah, I just wanna clarify that we use drive-through use and it applies to any use that has a drive-through with it. So there's, there's not really a way to parse out like a drive-through bank versus a drive-through pharmacy or anything like that. It's just anything with a drive-through is a use um a use type in the table.
Okay, um Lisa Smith and then Laura, and then we'll see if we have a second.
Um, yeah, I I was just gonna just speak to that as well. And while there certainly places in streets and areas where I think drive-through uses break up kind of the pedestrian street front and I specifically can be dangerous to cyclists. I'll just offer that I would not be comfortable with prohibiting them overall in all BC zones, um, because I do think that they are an access issue and an equity issue. Um, you know, for people who have mobility issues and so um that I'll just, I just wanted to offer that, that I think there are times and uses where they are appropriate and and that the, and yeah, I'll leave it there.
Uh, Laura?
I I was just hoping to ask Kurt to speak to the motion so I understand it. Um, why drive-through uses and why BC zones in particular? Why did you pick those zones?
Thank you. Yeah, I would like to speak to this. So the the general rubric of this project is to promote walkability in neighborhood centers, right? And I think most people would probably agree that drive-throughs are an impediment to walkability. Uh, they in they add curb cuts, they add crossing traffic, they discourage walking because they provide um the the they end end up uh with a bunch of cars queuing and um, you know, admitting tailpipe permissions and so on. So I think most people would agree that they are not consistent with walkability, which again is the goal of this project. And BC zones, because they are prohibited in the other neighborhood center zones. They are allowed in BC zones. And so since we're talking about walkable neighborhood centers, uh, the the BC zones are the one, the remaining neighborhood center zones that are where they're allowed. And um therefore, I think it would be appropriate to promote walkability by prohibiting them in those zones. There are other zone districts in the the city where they would still be allowed.
Um, uh Laura, did you get an answer, the answer you were looked, did you get enough of an answer to satisfy your question?
Um, yes, mostly. Thank you, Kurt. I I would like clarification on where they would still be allowed if they are not in the BC zones. I'm on the land use map and I wanna be able to light up where are they still allowed? Maybe that's a question for Lisa Hood.
Yeah, I can answer that. So um they're currently allowed only as a use review in several districts, so BC one and two, BCS, BR one and two, DT four, uh all of it, and then all of the downtown districts.
All of the DTs?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, they are allowed.
As a use review.
As a use review. Thank you.
Um, Hella, uh, ML, I'll get to you in a second, but our lawyer has her hand up. Hella?
I I just wanted to check in if you have a second yet for Kurt's proposed amendment.
We have not, I haven't asked for a second yet. Um, uh, I'm happy to do that. Um, do we have a second?
I I would second a motion that was properly made to separate, I think Kurt, Kurt, I'm interpreting that you want to make two amendments to the main motion. One prohibiting drive-throughs in the BC zones and two prohibiting detached dwelling units in the MK uh in the I'm having a hard time reading it, MU BT and BC zones. So to the way I would understand that or undertake that would be two motions to amend the main motion. So if you're making a motion to amend the main motion that prohibits drive-throughs in the BC zones and would state that, I would be glad to second it.
Okay, that's what I tried to say at the beginning.
Okay, so but I think you should state your motion with without number two there.
I I didn't, I didn't say number two, but I will say it again. I I move to amend uh the the city count, the the recommendation to city council to include prohibiting drive-throughs in VC zones.
I second that.
Great, thank you, Mark. Um, okay, ML.
So Devon, could you move that number two language and just kinda scoot it down for later? So we know what we're looking at. Okay, thank you.
Uh, ML? You've waited patiently.
No worries. Um, so yes, uh Kurt, I would also like to um support what you're proposing here and remind people that, you know, COVID really changed how of the options that we have um in collecting stuff, curbside pickup, um online banking. There's a lot of ways that people can make their life um simpler and without needing to get um out of their car without having the kind of antiquated uh reality of drive-ins. I mean, drive-ins was when, you know, everybody drove everywhere and didn't wanna get out of their cars um because it, because of the convenience. And now we have um curbside pickup and other online options for so many things. So I I think that this is talking about um uh not just the walkability factor that you brought up, but I think it's also acknowledging that the world has changed. And um we don't necessarily need to sit in a car idling at a drive-through window anymore. So I will be supporting this.
Okay, does anyone else have comments uh before we go to, oh, Laura?
Thank you. So I I'm just I totally agree with ML that I think the world is headed in a direction where we have a lot more options than drive-throughs. I also am sympathetic to the, you know, the logic that Lisa described around, there are populations for whom the things that that many of us take for granted in terms of accessibility and walkability is not an option. Um, and they can't always wait for curbside pickup or a delivery. You know, if it, if you're um a person having a medical emergency or if you're a person with small children or elderly relatives or or disabled relatives who need something right now. Um, and so I'm just looking at the map of the city. I'm in the uh our 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 Boulder zoning map where you can light up the different districts. And if we take away these BC zones, we basically centralize all of the drive-through uses around Pearl Street and in a big block around the 29th Street Mall. And that's it. Nothing in North Boulder, nothing in East Boulder, nothing in South Boulder. And the BC one, BC two and BCS districts do exist in East Boulder, North Boulder, South Boulder. Um, and they're small parcels, right? They're still, it's, most of the city still prohibits drive-throughs. Um, but I I personally um am not gonna support this one because of the accessibility issues and not wanting to centralize all those drive-throughs only around the downtown zone and the 29th Street Mall.
Okay, uh, thank you, Laura, then Lisa and then George, and then we'll go to a vote.
Um, yeah, I mean, I I think I already spoke to, but I'll just add that the fact that it already has to go through site review is another reason I wouldn't support it. I mean, every time this comes up, we get the chance to say we don't like it here. And and we've done that in the past as a board, you know, or we don't think this is appropriate. And so there is a high degree of oversight for any such requested uses now. Um, which makes me feel like overall prohibiting it in addition to having equity issues is unnecessary.
Thank you, Lisa. George?
Um, I think Lisa stated what I was gonna state because because I I wanted Kurt to know that I I'm very much on board with ninety-nine percent of drive-throughs not being put installed. But when we're talking pharmacies and other things, um, it becomes a different issue. And and I I I agree. I I was gonna make the point that Lisa did, which was the site review comment. And I I think that's where site review is really important. Um, and and so um I I I appreciate Kurt's um thoughts on this. And I think, you know, um, but I, but I, but I, I uh I'll I'll be voting against it for that, for that reason. Because I I still think there are some equity issues that need can be addressed with drive-throughs. And I'm thankful that we have a site review process that allows us to deny most frivolous drive-throughs in Boulder. So, thanks.
Thank you, George. Um, okay, any other comments before we ask Kurt to restate his amendments? And then we can vote. Right, I see no hands. So uh Kurt, would you mind restating your amendment?
Okay, yeah, my uh my motion is to add to the overall motion prohibiting drive-throughs in the VC zones.
Okay, so uh Kurt, what's your vote?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
ML?
Yes.
Uh, Laura?
No.
George?
No.
Uh, Lisa Smith, I hope you're there.
Yes.
Your vote is a yes or a no?
Sorry, my internet's been breaking out. What? You're restating what I'm doing.
You're voting on the amendment to prohibit drive-throughs in the BC zone?
No.
And I'm a no. So that fails uh three to four. But it seems Kurt like it's a topic to revisit uh at some point in the not-too-distant future to maybe clarify uh limitations or, you know. So thank you for bringing that up. Um, and now uh we have an opportunity to look at your second uh amendment. So Kurt, could you, could you state your second amendment, please?
Yeah, I move adding to the overall motion prohibiting detached dwelling unit use in the MU BT and VC zones.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Um, any comments, questions?
Can I speak to this?
Yes, of course.
Okay, thank you. Um, so again, the overall goal of this project is to increase walkability of neighborhood centers. Uh, we are talking about potentially adding some some residential uses in the neighborhood centers, which makes sense. But part of what makes a neighborhood center walkable is uh to have a diversity of of retail and other kinds of uses there. And you get a diversity of retail and other kinds of uses there with a large number of rooftops close by, right, within walkable distance. And you don't get a lot of rooftops in walkable distance if they're detached, single-family dwellings. We just, it just doesn't provide the walk shed that you need, uh, the the commuter shed that you need in order to provide, uh, to to make a really good walkable neighborhood center. So I am suggesting since seventy-five percent of our residential area is allows detached same-family uses, that this, it would be appropriate to prohibit them in these neighborhood center zones.
Hey, do people have questions or comments? Uh, Laura?
I have two questions. Are detached dwelling units allowed now in MU BT and BC zones?
I will answer that. So it's actually a little bit complex. So in our mixed-use zones, detached dwelling units are allowed if they existed before 2019. If not, they are require a use review. In the BT, they're only allowed if they're not on the ground floor. In BC, they're allowed in the parts of BC zoning that are not the neighborhood centers. Um, they, so detached dwelling units are allowed. But if they're in the neighborhood centers, then they have to be similar to our discussion about duplexes and townhomes. They have to be above the ground floor as a conditional use, or if they are on the ground floor, they require a use review.
How is a detached dwelling unit not on the ground floor?
Similar issue with the townhomes, yes. Uh, I mean, you can have a single dwelling unit above um a shop, essentially, like we would call that a detached dwelling unit. Single dwelling unit.
Okay, and are duplexes and tri, my second question, are duplexes and other plexes considered to be detached dwelling units? Or are they considered to be multifamily dwelling units?
Duplexes are a separate use type and then attached, anything three and above would be attached dwelling unit. Most is a townhouse.
Okay.
So Lisa, uh, just for my own clarity, because I don't, I I wouldn't think it that way. But you, so um, like I own a building in Salida and it's in the downtown core and there's a restaurant below it. And there's a single um unit above that. You would call that a detached unit?
That's my understanding. Charles, tell me if I'm wrong, but that's what I've understood. And also, same with duplexes also, if there were just two units, we would call it a duplex. Above something.
Did you need me to opine on that, Lisa?
Yeah, just let me know if I'm wrong about that, but that's what we would call it, right?
In a scenario where you had a unit on top of a a sing, a single unit?
Yeah, would we still call that a duplex? Yeah, that's what I thought. Thank you.
But that would be called a duplex or that would be?
No, it would be called a detached dwelling unit.
So just for clarification for 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 um what Kurt is seeking. Kurt, are you looking, are you looking for that definition? Are you looking for like a a a prohibition on single-family homes?
I I was really aiming for the latter. Uh, i- if something is above a res, a a retail use or something, that sounds great to me. So perhaps I don't have this framed right. I was thinking about a house like the house that I live in. It would just not be an appropriate use in a neighborhood center.
Can I just ask a clarifying question of staff? Wouldn't uh what George is describing be considered a live-work unit?
Uh, depends on whether they would be
Whether it's
Operating that.
Got it.
So if it's helpful, the the definition of detached dwelling unit, it just means no more than one dwelling unit within a structure. So it's a, it's a little misleading that it's called detached because it makes you think of a single-family home. But it really just means there's one dwelling unit in a structure.
So if Kurt's was reframed to a single-family home, maybe we can ask the same question that Laura asked, because I'd be interested in that. How does a single-family home in MU BT and BC zones currently, could someone develop? Because could you, could you walk through the same analysis that you just did for detached?
Yep, so it would be exactly the same. So we would call, we would do that. And I will say, so for many of these, it is getting at what Kurt is saying, that you could have it, but it would have to be above the ground floor, like you could have.
Right, but a ground floor, but a single-family home wouldn't, couldn't be above the ground floor.
Right, so the current
So it wouldn't, it wouldn't exist.
Exactly, but the current standards are already attempting to achieve that, at least in the BT and BC and the that, at least in the B T and B C. In the the M U, um, it's a little bit different, because it's not specific to ground floor.
Kurt, can you expand on the M U a little bit more?
Yeah, so in the M U, we only allow it if it was already there before twenty nineteen. And there, the only other option is to go through a use review, and there's use, there's some specific use standards related to only really allowing it if it's an area that there's already other detached dwelling units, basically.
Yeah, uh, the, and that um, allowing it if there are other detached dwelling units is part of what was concerning me. That that seems like a strange basis for allowing a use that is otherwise disallowed. You know, if in R L one, if there are a bunch of existing duplexes, we don't say, oh, okay, you can build another duplex, because there's a bunch of existing non-conforming use duplexes there. Uh, so, so that seemed problematic to me. So another alternative, maybe based on George's input, would be to eliminate that as a rationale for the use review.
Uh, Laura, and then, but Laura, before you go, I just, Kurt, are you contemplating maybe revising some of the language? I mean, if you are, uh, to get more closely to what you're trying to get to, um, maybe think that through?
Yes, I'm contemplating.
Okay, thanks. Uh, Laura, you you have your hand up.
Uh, I would, and I'm not gonna officially propose a friendly amendment, but I would be totally fine with changing the wording detached dwelling unit to single-family homes. And uh, and then I would be fine approving this, because I assume that if if the current code already does this, then staff doesn't need to make any changes. And if the current code doesn't do this, then staff would make appropriate changes. So I don't think we need to hash that out here tonight. I think the intent is clear that you don't want to have single-family homes in M U B T and B C. And we would trust staff to make the appropriate code changes if if staff feel like that is doable and clear enough direction.
Okay, uh, Kurt, do you wanna, do, would you like someone to make a friendly amendment to your amendments, so that it reflects?
Yes, but I'd also be interested in hearing from staff. I mean, we don't, I'm not sure that we have a definition of detached, single fam- whatever Laura said, detached, single-family dwelling. So I'm not sure whether that would be something that staff could work with.
I think, as I understood it from Laura, she wasn't saying specifically that we would like call out a different use, but we would find the the solution that would get at your intent, basically. Which I think that in B T and B C, that is, the rules are already drafted for that intent, that if it was a single dwelling unit, it would be above. Um, anyway, um, but if your intent is to outright prohibit them, there are still options in the code today, um, that people can pursue a use review. So if you you want to take that further and prohibit um, them entirely, can certainly do that. Um, I will say that the way the regulations are crafted for all of these districts already are already fairly disincentivizing uh, detached dwelling units, especially single, the single-family detached that we're thinking of.
Okay, well, it sounds like the the problem is not as great as I had imagined reading the code. And so I am happy to either withdraw this or have a quick vote on it. Or whatever, uh, because it sounds like it may not be necessary.
So it's up to you, Kurt. What, which would you prefer to withdraw or to have a vote?
Um, let's have a quick vote.
Okay, then I would like to propose a friendly amendment to change detached dwelling unit to single-family home. Uh, I would delete detached dwelling unit use and put in single-family home. Or single-family homes, plural.
And I accept that.
And I I would accept it as well.
Single-family homes.
Just for clarification of that, it sounds like that already is prohibited in B T and B C. So, uh, is that, is that correct, Laura Hood?
Um, Lisa, but
Lisa, sorry.
It's okay. Um, they said hood, right? Great job. So they're not prohibited. They're, they have to go through a use review. So that's what I was saying, that if you wanted to prohibit them, that would be a step further than we currently have. Um, but they are disincentivized, because you would have to go through a use review, and the rules are Yeah.
Okay, has there been a case where a single-family home has been put in a B T or B C through a use review? I I don't remember.
I don't, can't think of any off the top of my head. I will call on Charles to see if he knows.
Also Brad has, Brad has magically appeared, so
Oh, and Brad, or Brad. Sorry, can't see everybody.
Let's have Charles answer that question, and I will follow it. No, Lisa, I'm not aware of any, um, you know, in my tenure either.
Uh, Brad, your turn.
Yeah, I I think just for staff clarification, um, the motivation behind using the term single-family home, uh, if you could help us understand that, because that is not a defined term in the code. It is uh, uh, single family, or a single dwelling unit.
Detached dwelling unit, yeah.
Detached dwelling, yeah.
I I think, Brad, the reason to do it is because of what Lisa explained, that detached dwelling unit can apply to a single dwelling unit within a building that also has commercial or retail uses. So like, for example, uh, I used to live above a gas station in a in a single apartment, and that would be prohibited. But that wasn't Kurt's intent. His intent was a single-family home. And I will give you an example from San Francisco, where my husband's former employer basically bought up a city block, you know, multimillionaire, and built a huge house, right? And you could do that wherever you want, I suppose. If you can do it by use review, and and maybe that would never happen here. But it happened in San Francisco. So, and I don't know exactly what their code is. But I can imagine a situation where somebody very wealthy might decide they want to put a house right in the middle of, I don't know, Pearl Street or something, and and just do it.
Right, and I I guess the problem I'm expressing is that in the absence of a definition, because all of our use types, unless they're commonly understood like a laundry mat. But when it comes to residential, especially a very defined term, so since we don't have a defined term for single-family home, which we would probably recommend at least be described as single-family detached um, home. Uh, to get to your point of uh, stacked vertical mixed use. But but I'd encourage you to maybe uh, give us the the spirit of the amendment versus the actual undefined term, and we'd we'd be able to come back and and follow up. I, Lisa, hello, maybe you can jump in with any other thoughts.
Yeah, I think, I think um, maybe talking about standards that would discourage single units not in a mixed-use building might be more of what you're after. Rather than talking about single-family homes, just because single-family homes is not a defined term in our code, but it's a term people use a lot, so it just might be a um, misconstrued by people that read it.
Could I suggest a change to my friendly amendment based on this very constructive dialogue to say prohibiting single-family detached units that are not part of a mixed-use buil- building? Is that what you were saying, Lisa? Single-family detached units that are not part of a mixed-use building?
Yeah, you don't need the single family. You could just say detached dwelling units that are not part of a mixed-use building.
Okay. Detached, okay, so Devin, could you please delete single-family homes? And say, um, detached dwelling units that are not part of a mixed-use building. And I would look to Kurt and Mark whether they would accept that friendly amendment to change the language.
I accept that.
I accept it too.
Hey, let's go to a vote. M L?
Yes.
Lisa? Lisa Smith? Okay, you'll come back, you'll come back. Okay, George?
Uh, yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Lisa? Lisa Smith?
Yeah.
Okay, and Sarah's a yes. Okay. So that amendment, subject to the passage of the entire motion, has been approved seven-zero. Okay, I am now going to read the total, the overall. I thank you for doing that, uh, Devin. And then we will have a final vote. Making a motion, planning board makes the following motion. Planning board recommends that city council adopt ordinance eight-five-nine-zero, amending Title Nine Land Use Code to update the use table and use standards related to walkable neighborhoods, including the following amendments. An amendment to retain nine dash six dash five E seven B, and to recommend to council, the direct staff, to undertake a robust public process that specifically and solely focuses on restaurant, group hub, and tavern use standards and code enforcement in U G I D to develop a way to move forward that finds the right balance for all involved. Second amendment that prohibits detached dwelling units that are not part of a mixed-use building in the M U B T and B C zones. Okay, so I'm now gonna, we're gonna vote. Mark?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
M L?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Sarah's a yes, so it passes seven-zero. Most excellent. Congratulations to staff. Thank you all very, very much. So we have a situation, which is that we have a, we have a site review that we're gonna take up. We also have regulations on the books, or at least uh, if they're not regulations, they're tradition, that we don't uh, take up new, new items after ten o'clock. So uh, this, I have a feeling that we may lose a person or two as we go through this site review. And I just want to make, I don't want to make us have another meeting on another day, because our Tuesdays are already awfully full. But I just want us to be aware that we're gonna have some, um, we're gonna lose some folks along the way, and is, I want everyone to just be okay with that. Charles?
And I'm also wondering if we may want to check with the applicant, um, to make sure that they're okay with that as well.
Okay.
Whether or not they have a preference.
All right, um, so if the applicant could please appear.
I think we'll need to admit Danica Powell and Daniel Eisenman.
Okay, and then um, maybe Hella can also join us, just in case there are legal issues to be raised. Thank you.
And I also, I also would like to say that I have a somewhat time-sensitive update about the airport process. I'm happy that I wanted to bring up in matters, um, and I'm happy to do that. And then also to send it, if there's no legal problem, to summarize my verbal comments and send it out to the planning board list for folks who have to leave early, so that they can uh, at least be informed, even if they're not present for discussion.
Um, okay, if you don't mind, uh, Laura, I appreciate you trying to uh, get that, to share with us what you're working on. Uh, but I, if we can solve the site review applicant question first. Okay. Uh, so Charles, um, because we've not been in this situation before, can I ask you to lead the, lead the process, lead this questioning process?
Sure, um, well, you know, as you stated in the rules chair, that um, typically the board won't take any new business before uh, ten or after ten P M., and that most meetings are supposed to adjourn by ten-thirty. Uh, in this particular case, I think, given the complexity of the uh, item that's before us tonight, it probably makes sense to check in with the applicant team to see if um, they're comfortable with either losing some members as the night goes on, or if there are preferences to have a bifurcated hearing, or maybe we get through the public hearing portion this evening, and then uh, move deliberations uh, to a different evening, or whether or not it's the applicant's preference to request a full continuance um, to a date specific where um, we have a little bit more time in the agenda where uh, we can have a complete discussion and get through the entire item.
Um, Daniel, go ahead, please.
Yeah, thanks, everybody. I know it's very late, and I want to be respectful of your time. Uh, so I'm not sure what our options are. Uh, I know the next planning board meeting is on nine-nineteen, according to Charles. Uh, would it be possible to do a continuance for a special meeting on eight-twenty-nine on Tuesday, eight-twenty-nine? I know there's no meeting set uh, for that time.
Thought we did have a meet, I guess I'm wrong. I thought we did have a meeting at eight-twenty-nine. Nope, we don't, you're right.
We don't, that that is the volunteer appreciation picnic at the Boulder Reservoir, which I'm happy to miss uh, in order to conduct business, but I just wanted to raise that.
Uh, so uh, Charles, what does this mean for staff?
Well, Shannon and I are available. Edward Stafford, who has um, been with us this evening to serve as um, our transportation engineering expert, um, is not available that evening, but I think we can probably have a proxy or um, a plan B to help uh, make sure that we have the support that we need on the transportation side.
Okay, so let me then turn to the board. We'll make a collective decision. Here, our two options are to go late, to to start this meeting and sort of violate our own code in terms of uh, voting on something late in the evening. Or to have the meeting, have a meeting added to our schedule on the twenty-ninth of August.
Can I pitch a question to staff, or or, and I know that we're just jam-packed through the end of the year, but are there any other days or times which may or may not be acceptable to the applicant? When we already have meetings, and this could move to, I know specifically that sometimes things get rolled out in ways we don't anticipate, just wondering. Because whenever we add another meeting that I don't have in the books already, I, for example, am always a maybe, until I can guarantee that I'll be able to get to that date.
Uh, we have pretty full agendas through September nineteenth. You do have a concept plan scheduled for that evening. You know, we could certainly add this to the agenda too. Uh, but I think that would probably be the next meeting that would have any possible availability. I do want to chime in and repeat uh, the third option Charles mentioned, which is to start the item today and then continue its deliberation on another day. Whether that's at a special meeting or one of the existing meetings. Charles, do we also have as an option, the September twelfth for potential special meeting? Um, yeah, so September twelfth, um, there's no actual meeting on the book. So if the desire of the board, and if it was acceptable to the applicant, that would be an option too.
So if uh, if that is acceptable, uh, the twelfth, we would like to start tonight and then continue on the twelfth, if possible.
Okay, so here's my proposal, but Daniel, tell me what you think. We'll get through applicants, uh, the applicant, the applicant's proposal, presentation and public comments. And at that point, then we will uh, wrap up for the night. Uh, and come back on the twelfth to com- complete the project. Are you all right with that?
Is there a chance that uh, we can all agree on a vote today and finish after ten and get to ten-thirty?
No, I I can guarantee you, we're gonna lose at least two people, possibly more.
Understand.
Sorry about that. The morning, the first meeting, the first issue took longer than we had planned.
And and Sarah, I I apologize for prolonging this, but I personally would prefer the twenty-ninth of August to the twelfth of September. Strongly prefer. That's like my one vacation.
If you're on vacation, you don't have to participate.
I, I know, I know.
I'm sorry, Kurt. I'm sorry, Laura. Kurt said something to you that may be about his availability as well, which may also add.
I will also be on vacation on September twelfth. I, I saw a slot in the, in the calendar, and so I took it.
All right, and I actually am not available on the twelfth uh, myself, so you'd be down to four. So I think we have to go back to August twenty-ninth and go from there. So we can, let's do the
And Daniel, ju- just to clarify, would your preference be to introduce the item tonight? And then continue to the twenty-ninth, or would your preference be to do the entire thing on the twenty-ninth? If the twenty-ninth is one, we will come back.
Yeah, I would, if the twenty-ninth is available, I would rather just have a single meeting on the twenty-ninth, and not bifurcate. Yeah, I would, if the twenty ninth is available, I would rather just have a single meeting on the twenty ninth, not a bifurcate.
Okay, I see a lot of nodding heads. Okay, we'll do it on the twenty ninth. Uh, as long as, uh, staff had said there will be staff available, it may not be Edward, but there'll be staff available. All right, um.
Sarah, just to clarify, then you, you would need to make, somebody would need to make two motions. One, to. Uh, establish a special meeting on that night and vote on that, and then a second motion to continue this item till that new date certain.
Okay, so it has to be two separate motions?
Yes, please.
Okay, so planning board makes a motion to, uh, establish a special meeting on August twenty ninth.
My second.
Thank you. Uh, Kurt.
I'm voting no, because I would rather just continue tonight.
Okay, ML.
Yes.
Uh, Lisa.
Yes.
Laura.
Yes.
George.
Yes.
Uh, where is Mark? We've lost Mark. Well, that was fast. Okay, and I'm a yes, so that passes. And then the second motion. What was the second motion, Brad?
Um, to continue this item to that specific date.
But we're not gonna start this meeting. We're not gonna start this.
It's, it's been legally noticed for tonight, so by.
Oh, sorry, okay.
Continuing yet, you don't.
Okay, sorry about that.
Yeah.
All right, so the second motion is, uh, to continue this, hold on, let me, let me give the actual name of the thing. Hold on. All right, Mike, um, I've got this problem with my computer being much too small. I can't see anything. What's, what's the?
Mark looks like he's back.
What's the L U R? Can someone just tell me the L U R?
L U R twenty twenty two zero 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 four one.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Mike. I just can't see it. I'm like, okay, so motion.
Hey, well, sir, I'm sorry, sorry to interrupt you. Do you see it? Mark just got back. Do, do we need to reverse and just get his vote on that now?
It passed. I, I mean, market, I, we've already. I guess we can, Mark, do you support? Yes, he's a fine. So now it's seven zero. Okay. The second motion is that we're gonna continue the meeting on L U R two zero two two dash zero 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 four one to August twenty ninth. Uh, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Laura. Kurt?
Yes, since we have a meeting, yes.
Okay, ML.
Yes.
Lisa.
Yes.
Uh. Laura.
Yes.
George.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes, although I gotta say, I was looking forward to partying with all of you at the res.
I was too.
Maybe they can move up, maybe they can move it up and start it at four. Um, all right, uh, Sarah's a yes, so that passes seven zero. Um. Daniel and team, thank you very much for your patience and we will see you on the twenty ninth. Uh. And, uh, okay, so now we can go to matters. Uh, Laura, you have the floor.
I, I don't know if, if staff had matters that they wanted to do before me. I'm still pulling up a couple of emails.
Okay, staff, do you how have matters?
Nothing from staff, Brad, unless you have something.
Uh, just a reminder for those, uh, handful of you who.
Hello.
Hello?
That was fun.
Oh, somebody's got.
Can we mute Daniel Eisenman, please?
Thank you. Okay, um.
Yeah, so I was just saying, for those of, a few handful of you who haven't responded to Devin's. Doodle poll or whatever it was, uh, for the retreat. Uh, if you could please do so, so we can get that wrapped up and on everybody's calendars, I'm sure all would appreciate that and we're eager to. Be able to meet with you in that tin formal setting.
Okay, thank you.
Well, that's all I got.
Um, Le- Laura.
Okay, thank you. And Sarah, actually, just to note, the party at the res does start at four, so if we want to get there and like four to five, hang out and then go home and do the planning board meeting, we can.
There you go. Perfect.
Okay, um, so thank you, everybody. Uh, I'll try to be brief, even though, uh, we only had one item tonight. So the airport, as you know, uh, I'm, I'm your liaison for the airport community conversation. And, um, there are basically, I guess what I want to emphasize tonight is there are two kind of key junctures. Where staff is going to be taking something to city council. And one of those opportunities is coming up next week on Thursday, August twenty fourth. So I wanted to update you on what is going on August twenty fourth and then kind of the next steps from there. Um, I also want to remind you, the last time we wrote a letter to city council, we basically requested and said, hey, consider having a hearing at planning board at some point. Because there is no hearing scheduled for us to look at this project, hear from staff, uh, discuss it, make any recommendations. Um, that is not part of, uh, the airport community conversation process as described by staff. So we made a recommendation to council, hey, consider asking for this. Have not heard back about that. And as far as I know, that, that has not changed. So. There is no formal process for planning board as a group to weigh in on this airport community conversation. And where we are headed. There's this, uh, check-in point in August where staff are going to go to city council and say. Here are the four scenarios that we have developed. These are the same four scenarios that they took to the open house, uh, last month. And also had a be heard boulder questionnaire about if anybody got a chance to, um, participate. So. Those same four scenarios are gonna go to city council and city council will also hear about the public input to date. And also the evaluation that staff have done of those four scenarios against a common set of criteria. That are based on our sustainability, equity and resilience framework. Uh, sta- um, staff will also talk to city council, I think. About a list of short-term action items that were developed to say, hey, no matter what the eventual future of the airport is, which could be many years or even decades down the road. Are there things that are short-term that we want to do right now? So I think all of that is gonna get discussed with city council at a study session on the twenty fourth. There is no public input because it's a study, uh, session or no, no public comment at that meeting. So if anybody wants to weigh in before that meeting happens, you would need to just write to council. Um, and I do plan to write to council as an individual, giving some of my thoughts about, for example, some data gaps that they may want to ask staff to fill in. Before they make that eventual decision about what is the future of the airport and which of these four scenarios should we be pursuing? And that decision point again is in January, it's not in August. Let me stop there and say, are there any questions about the process? Do you feel sufficiently informed about what's going on with the airport process and what your opportunities to weigh in are right now? And I'll be clear, staff are not asking us to weigh in, so not as a board and then not as individuals. They just have a study session planned with council. So there's no request on the table. But, you know, if you wanted to weigh in, you could do that as an individual as, as we all can at any time. Any questions about the airport process or where we're going, or, or Brad, anything you wanted to, to correct or, or comment upon?
No, that, that's all on point as I know it.
Uh, Kurt.
When did you say the study session was?
August twenty fourth. So this coming, not, not two days from now, but a week from that. And, um. Uh, sorry, go ahead.
I don't see any other hand, so, um, feel free to, to move to your next point.
Okay, so as I mentioned, I am gonna be writing a letter as an individual and, you know, I, I believe in information sharing and I believe in no surprises. So if anybody on this board, because I am your liaison. Even though I would be acting in my individual capacity and I would make that clear to council that I'm writing in my individual capacity. If you want to see it, if you want to see it ahead of time, if you want to talk to me about it, I'm very happy to do that. Of course, we cannot, you know, have a meeting outside of the meeting, but one-on-one. If there's something that you want to ask me or see the letter, I'm happy to share it with you.
Can I just, I think I just need to ask Hella, it, it, does that? I, I really appreciate you offering, giving us all a chance so, to give you feedback on your letter, but does that? Actually, was, is that actually a serial meeting in some way inadvertently?
Well, to be clear, I'm not suggesting that we craft the letter together. I'm just saying if anybody wants to be informed and talk to me, that they're more than welcome.
Yeah, fair enough. Uh, my question still stands. Is that inadvertently a serial meeting?
Um, I'm, I'm not sure I fully understand what's proposed, um.
I think what Laura's proposing is she would draft something and then if any of us want to weigh in on it or at least see what's in it. She's happy to share it with us. One-on-one. So that's, I think, what she's proposing, but the question then is, does that, in essence. Inadvertently become a serial meeting because she, she, she might be talking to. One of us and then make changes and talk to another one of us and make, like, I just, not sure.
But I'm not anticipating that we would jointly edit. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not anticipating that.
Capacity as an individual and a citizen, so I, it's not a planning board related issue.
Right, but we're all planning board members. That's just why I'm asking, um, Hella, like what.
No, I think it's good to get the advice. Yeah, thanks for asking the question.
Problem is to send it as a letter from the board, then, then the board should vote on it after it's drafted.
Yes, and, and to be clear, that's not what I'm proposing. I would be sending the letter as an individual. I'm just happy to share information if people want to see what I'm writing. And if people want to ask me questions or talk to me about it, but I'm not planning to edit the letter based on input. I'm not asking for changes or edits or feedback. I'm just happy to share information, mostly so that you folks, um, know what I'm thinking as an individual. And if you wanted to write your own letters, you'd be welcome to do that, um, but it's not, it's, it would not be coming from planning board. It's just, I'm trying to make sure there are no surprises. That if you see a letter from me that has gone to council. And you wanted to see it first, you're, you're welcome to do that. But again, I'm not, I'm not proposing that we're writing something together. It's mostly just a no surprises policy and an information sharing, because this is a very complicated topic. And we don't generally have time to really go into it. We're not gonna have a hearing on it. We're not gonna get a presentation from staff, so I'm just trying to be really transparent. About what I have learned and what my takeaways are and, and that you all feel sufficiently informed about what's going on.
So I, I certainly want Hella to weigh in, but I would just say from a, um. A, a perspective view that that seems a little convoluted and kind of does cross into the fact that you are planning, uh, board member. Uh, if you're, if you're submitting a letter on your own behalf. From yourself, um. Laura, it's in the public record once you do that. All of these people in the rest of the world has access to the public record. You know, if anything, you could just say. Hey, go look at the public record. Once that happens. Now, that may not be a legal necessity, but I think it's, it's probably a perceptual consideration.
Uh, that would work for me if, if folks are okay with, um, you know. Again, I'm just trying to be transparent with everybody, so I can go ahead and send a letter and then just copy you, just send it, say, hey, here's what I sent and then no discussion. What do folks think?
My suggestion, my personal suggestion would be you write whatever you want to write and then after you send it to the, to city council and it becomes part of the public record, feel free to share it with us. But it's post, you've already sent it. Nobody can accuse us of like colluding in any possible way. Even though you were plant sending it as an individual, it just, I think it covers everybody's tukus, so, uh, we don't have to worry about things.
I'm all about covering the tukuses, so, okay? Takata, I don't know.
ML, you have, ML has a question.
Um, and not, not really a question to comment, um, you know, all the legal issues aside, Laura, I totally. Appreciate your enthusiasm for the subject and your, um, desire, you know, to make sure that everybody gets as much information as, uh. As your, as you have, um, on it. So, thank you for, for that enthusiasm and being such a fabulous liaison to keep us. Um, on topic with a very complicated process. Yeah, so I appreciate your reaching out.
Thank you and you're welcome. I'm doing my best and I do appreciate Sarah, your attention to process and Hella and Brad, your advice on making sure that we keep our tukuses covered.
We'll have, we'll have a planning board meeting in Yiddish yet. Um, okay, um, Laura, did you have anything else on this topic?
Uh, no, I, I think I'm good unless people have questions. Like I said, I could talk about the airport for hours, but I know we don't have hours and, um, you know. That's fine. At this point, we're not being asked to weigh in as a board, so. I think we've been very vocal on this issue, so I think we might want to, uh, consider a planning board recommendation when we get to the point of a decision. But that's, you know, not till next January, so.
Okay, thank you, Laura. Anybody else on board, on the board have, uh, a matter they want to bring up? Okay. I declare. This meeting adjourned. Thank you all very much and we will see you whenever our next meeting ends, which might be next week for all I know. Okay, bye.